Okay, I'd like to call the public hearing to order. This is to consider two ordinances. Ordinance number 2016-05-043 and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four-three to increase the number of G2 liquor licenses for Om Shuv Incorporated doing business as Vegas Place, 501 South Vine Street. And we have ordinance number 2016-05-044 and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three dash four-three to increase the number of G2 liquor licenses for Hay Ram Incorporated doing business as Poker Room, 1509 East Washington Street. And I got a comment from Lloyd Lane, who is not able to be here, who is opposed to the 501 South Vine Street G2 license. He says that he's concerned that schools are too close and insufficient parking. So then I'll call on the people that actually want to testify.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So pursuant to state law, as a liquor license holder in the city of Urbana, I'm required to recuse myself from this hearing.
Okay. Paul DeBevick. Oh. Okay. Are you here for the public hearing on these two liquor things?
Not on this particular issue.
Okay, so maybe what you want to do is we'll call on you at the Committee of the Hall?
I think that's better. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Robin Arbiter.
Hi. Thank you. My name is Robin Arbiter. I live at 1511 Hunter Street in Urbana. And I'm here as a resident and as a founding member of the Lehrman Neighborhood Action The three video gambling parlors on Sunnycrest, which brought in about 30,000 each and lost revenue from Urbana, were sites where this year, or 1516, folks lost $600,000 at each site for combined loss among the three of those of $1.8 million. Video gaming parlors are lucrative business for a rarefied few, but certainly not for players. Yet gaming and other forms of gambling are one of the most commonly offered amusements near the Lehrman neighborhood already. And residents there feel that there's enough of this because in addition to the three G2 licensed video gaming parlors in Sunnycrest, and I think another one under construction, there are video gaming machines at the VFW on Main and two on Washington, one each in the 1,300 and 1,400 blocks of East Washington. Additionally, lottery tickets are sold in great quantities, I should say purchased in great quantities, in the heart of the neighborhood at 1511 Washington. So while gambling as a way of raising city and state funds may be a done deal, and while gambling may continue to grow along with the increasing distance between Americans and their abilities to meet their financial needs, and while we may not be able to say that Urbana's market for gaming parlors is saturated, I think we can say that in the Lehrman neighborhood, my neighborhood, we are saturated with opportunities to lose money. In fact, residents, families visiting, and workers in this area are paying far more than other populations in this regressive tax climate. To facilitate the placement of yet another opportunity to lose money in the social center of Lehrman neighborhood would be a planning offense to what the neighbors are trying to do in another direction. In the 2014 Lehrman Neighborhood Community Assessment carried out by the city in ELNAK, 14 households in our area closest to the proposed site reported incomes of $5,000 or less. One in five reported unemployment, fewer than half in the area reported full-time employment. Fifty-five households at nearby Aspen Court utilize HUD assistance or Section Eight vouchers, as do a number of single-family households, with many more qualifying but waiting for housing support. This is an economically fragile neighborhood enduring significant stress. Lottery games, which is a little bit of a sidebar here, but please be patient, lottery games, which are a huge business in the neighborhood disproportionately engage people who lack access to earned income. Lottery games attract five times more black players than white, reflecting disparities of access, which I hope we all understand, and are engaged in challenging. Certainly bringing opportunities for health and self and neighborhood determination are core reasons for the creation of the Lehrman Neighborhood Action Committee and are the concern of most adults in the neighborhood, none of whom, not one, have spoken positively to ELNAK volunteers during several recent neighborhood walkthroughs. I mentioned the lotto sales, the lottery ticket sales, only to point out that they alone put the economic burden of the gaming system onto neighborhoods much like the Lehrman neighborhood. The proposed gaming parlor would add significantly to that burden because it is also designed to generate huge net losses. ELNAK volunteers and
Ms. Arbiter, you have one minute left.
Feel that we cannot afford to bleed a quarter of a million to a half a million more dollars a year for a $30,000 profit to the city and a $200,000, $10 profit to the parlor's owner. Finally, according to one study, 48 percent of machine gambling revenues come from problem and pathological gamblers, meaning that approving the facility in our neighborhood would engage or invite growth of addictive behaviors already wounding us due to the intersection of trauma, unemployment, and underemployment and disability. Residents want better and are working for better, and given this, approving a G2 license for a gaming parlor to be added to the central adult gathering spot in the neighborhood would be exploitative. In addition to being unwelcome and unnecessary, please do not grant a G2 liquor license in service of the proposed video gaming parlor at 1509 East Washington.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Robin? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Barnes.
Good evening. I'm the interim garden manager for Lehrman Community Garden located at the southeast corner of Lehrman and Washington Streets in Urbana. And as a garden volunteer over the last year, I've learned a lot about the Lehrman neighborhood. Most notably, I've learned that business and sophisteral infrastructure that is common to more affluent neighborhoods of Urbana is seriously lacking in this neighborhood. And while we do our best to make up for the scarcity of easily accessible nutritious food, the fact remains that there are other things that more affluent neighborhoods take for granted that do not exist at Lehrman. There are no benches to wait for buses or public or private areas for people to meet, especially young people, lest they be considered loitering. Of all the businesses that could be opened in this neighborhood, this is the one type of business that is already over-serving the neighborhood. This neighborhood bears more than its shares of gaming for the city, and the revenue statistics bear this out. I urge you to deny this license. With the number of new families coming to the neighborhood in the next two years, the offices at Brookins, and the soccer fields, there is ample opportunity to create something that will benefit both the city and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Anderson.
Good evening. I was born in this town. This has been my hometown, except when I was at school. I told a commission or a meeting a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, about Lacy's Place that was trying to move into the family video, that in the early '60s, the city council and my father, who was on it at that time, worked very hard to remove the saloons or the freestanding bars that were along Main Street. And those no longer exist today. We also had a discussion about Lacy's Place and all the money that they could make as they tried to move in where the children crossed the street to go to school, at King's School. That was defeated due to some motion of a B3 in the middle of a neighborhood, okay? And I had been so upset with this city in the last few months that I actually took the time to read a couple of things that are very, very long, the vision for Urbana and the city ordinances, okay? So my objection is this. I'm not sure why we're putting alcohol and gambling into our neighborhoods, okay? I just don't see the point. I don't think that you need to make the money that way. I can tell you that several years ago, I tried to open a business, my practice, in Urbana, because I was born here. And I was told that I should be friends with the mayor in order to get that done. That is not an appropriate response.
That was not this mayor, right?
No. I don't even know.
I want to make that clear.
But this is not a personal thing, okay? I just have to tell you, because I don't keep track of everything that close. But to be told that is disturbing, okay? It's disturbing that the people with money and the people that dangle money in front of this city are the ones that are getting liquor licenses and gambling parlors around our schools and around our soccer fields. And I, for example, used to be able to ride my bike all the way out Washington Street to Homer Lake. Can't do that anymore. Can't do that. I don't feel safe walking, going out there. You know? We've lost monocles, and a lot of things are out there that have changed in the last 20 years. It's very disturbing. And you're not going to put one up in my neighborhood, because I'm sure we would all get up and probably stand in front of the site. But I do not think that we need any more liquor licenses in this city at all, period. I don't think you need another gambling machine of any type at all. If you can't find better ways to make money, then I'm sorry for you, but to give away streets, to have these boondoggles down on Windsor Road where you lose $2.5 million and can't open it, these are problems that need to be addressed. It is not going to be solved by putting alcohol and gaming machines in these neighborhoods. I just don't think it is. So I vote very heavily against it, and I keep coming to these meetings now, and it's very disturbing that we have to come back and readdress this alcohol and gaming stuff. I'm very opposed to it, okay? And I actually have drinks sometimes, okay? I don't gamble, but I do have drinks, so it's not that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a minute, Betty. Hold on. Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. So one of the things that's been proposed is that any, the portion of the money that comes from the city could be then used to do programs in the community. Do you think that that would then justify having a gaming hall open up?
You know, that was interesting, because that was brought up in the 2005 Vision for Urbana, okay? I read about that. I'm like, what is going on here? And what I saw when I read that Vision for Urbana is that you want some bicycle lanes, which, you know, are usually pretty good, except where you could get killed on a couple of these intersections riding a bike, I think Philo in Washington and down here in front of the library. You wouldn't get me in a bike lane there for any amount of money. They also wanted, let's see, the outline was inclusive of put some more trees up, respect the green spaces, respect the historic nature of our neighborhood, and get some social workers, okay? And that doesn't really, that doesn't really take care of the situation, does it? If you have a social worker and the people don't go to the social worker because they have no money, they have no transportation, they can't make it to the meeting or whatever they're supposed to do, how does that help the people? As a physician, you have appointments sometimes, and the people don't show up for their appointments. What is the answer to that? What is the answer when you have people that spend all of the family's money in these parlors and come home drunk, and they hit one of the kids, go out and cross the street? That's a terrible thing to do. There are better businesses that you can bring in here. I clearly cannot help you with that. I cannot even be a politician because I don't have the necessary tools, okay? But you take $30,000 and you hire a part-time social worker to take care of one particular neighborhood, and these Lacy Places and all these other, let's see, Jubies, I saw coming home tonight, Jubies is having happy hour. How are you going to stop these people from doing what they want to and feel like doing? I have a real problem with it. I think, you know, there's enough. You have enough. Matter of fact, if you could probably cut back 50 percent, and most of us wouldn't even notice it. My actual opinion is they should all be on a riverboat, as I said a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure how this stuff got off the water. I'm very disturbed about it, because we were, you know, our school is suffering. Urbana High School is the best school around, the best bar none, okay? My kids do great in it, they have amazing teachers, and you're trying to get the money from drinking and gambling? I'm like, really? That is not the example I want to give my daughter. That's why I have to come here, because she tells me I have to come here and fight for this.
Thank you.
So I'm sorry. I just am very disturbed about revenue being raised this way, and I'm not sure you can solve it by hiring a bunch of social workers. I clearly don't know how to solve those problems, because I do eye surgery, okay? So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no other people that want to testify at the hearing.
Except, I do have
Okay. Dennis wants to say something.
Yeah. All right. So, of course, I'm going to be talking about pretty much both sites, but I did get rather a lot of communication, because both of these liquor licenses would be in Ward Five. So for the record, Chris Stor says, "No on the G2 licenses. Social service funding has been slashed and held up by Governor Rauner. This community is stressed enough. No to gaming hall at a major east Urbana school crossing. No to a gaming license at East Washington in the Lehrman neighborhood. Gaming is available close enough in Sunnycrest and on South Philo Road." Sarah Matheny emailed me. She says, "We don't really need any more gaming machines in the area, especially so close to the school. My vote would be no. Sorry, I cannot make the meeting tonight." Also by phone, I got Mr. Lloyd's expressions of not wishing to have the G2 permit at 501 South Ray Street, and he also, the mayor has mentioned this before, he's concerned because it's an important school crossing for children. Also, from Jean Grass in my neighborhood, "I strongly ask you to vote against it. Not appropriate location to sell alcohol." This is concerning the South Ray Street. "Not a compatible business for the neighborhood. It will diminish the quality of the neighborhood. Awkward and bad intersection to have people pulling in and out after drinking. Too close to residential areas for this business. Short distance from the middle school. It's across from the farmer's market. Kids walking to Lille and Middle School during the school season." Those are the ones that I came up with in just a few moments. Okay. The fifth one is from Tammy Masters, and she lives at 2005 Easy Street, so this has to do mostly with the East Washington location. She leads the County Square Addition Neighborhood Watch. "Our community is very concerned at the prospect of another liquor license gambling spot in Champaign in Urbana. With the influx of them at our community, which is already possible, these target our poorer neighbors that gamble away what little money they have for the chance to get ahead, which they don't. Our state is already holding our money hostage, and our citizens are hurting. Please stop the chaos. We already have too much crime, shootings and burglaries. The people impacted in our neighborhood will lose what little they have. Just strike out harder against the community." All right. We have now from Mike Lehrman. He lives on the 600 block of Yss Green Street. "Dennis, given the already substantial number of such establishments in Urbana, I see little need or call from ordinary citizens for any more, no matter what the location. In fact, it is quite likely that some of the existing ones will fail. Better to cap the number and have applicants contest among each other for those when they become available. In any case, there needs to be a solution short of continuing to grant these requests, as it seems to be the case up to this point. Moratorium on new licenses until better assessment tools for the benefit and cost, as well as the way to limit the sitting of truly suitable locations become available would be a good starting point." Okay. Then I have a letter from Mr. Dossit. He asks that the clerk please place this message in the record as public comment. "Dear members of the Urbana City Council, I am opposed to further gaming casinos in Urbana at this time. I believe it is the council's responsibility to thoroughly review and disallow or to allow development based on relevant community norms, neighborhood conditions, and best development practices. I believe, judged on these items, these terms, that the recent explosive growth of the gaming parlors threatens the quality of our community. Gambling casinos are not simply small businesses. Their stated purpose is to allow citizens to wager their income against the house, where the house sets the rules for returns. Many studies prove that disproportionate impact of gaming on people with moderate means, in particular the location of a gaming establishment close to the already busy and sometimes unsupervised school crosswork on Vine Street is just a bad idea." My neighbor Melissa Appleby, she lives across from me, said, "Thank you for the update, Dennis. I agree with both of your planned votes," which actually I'm not going to support these. "Thank you for all the patience and hard work on our behalf." Then Meg Miller says, "This phenomenon is certainly odd to me. I have never set foot in one, have you? I guess that that would be an appropriate field trip. Seems to me that there are plenty of these already. Do they make a profit, or is it some kind of cover for something else? My bias would definitely be to vote no." Then Mr. Tyler Fitch, who lives in my neighborhood, says, "I cannot attend tonight, but I am strongly opposed to locating gaming uses near residential properties, whether single or multifamily. We had a similar planning case a couple of weeks ago involving the family video location on North Lincoln Street. Elderman Ammons and other neighbors testified in opposition. We recommend unanimously against the rezoning request, not just because of the intended use as a gaming hall, but because it was a broader request for a B3, which allows bars, adult entertainment, et cetera, by right. In fact, I think council should consider amending the liquor ordinance to place a minimum distance restriction on gaming halls from residential property. No closer than 300 or 500 feet, or whichever it is, for schools and churches. Hey, thanks and good luck." And it's Tyler Fitch, who happens to be the chair of the Planning Commission. And then we also did get a rather long letter from Diane Marlin, who's city council member Ward Seven, who cannot be here tonight. And I guess I'll read her comments. "While I can't vote on this tonight, I shall share my opinion, and as that can be read into the record. I am opposed to a gaming parlor at this location in this neighborhood. I have spent hundreds of hours working in the Lehrman Garden, hosting kids' events and helping plan for the townhome redevelopment and renovation of Aspen Court. Most of all, I've observed hosting the truly heroic efforts of the ELNAK committee to advocate for their neighborhood and develop quality of life in that people in other parts of the town take for granted. Safe streets, decent affordable housing, a low crime rate are still the goals of the Lehrman neighborhood, and they are not yet reality. This neighborhood deserves better than a gaming parlor. One, the Lehrman Neighborhood Action Committee is strongly opposed to the gaming parlor at 1509 Washington. Their opinion deserves the same consideration and respect for this council gives to other neighborhood organizations. Two, within walking distance, there are two gaming parlors at Sunnycrest and a third under construction. These are all in my ward, that's Ward Seven, and all near the concentration of low-income housing at Sunnycrest. One of them is the highest grossing gambling parlor in the city, which means a lot of money is being lost there on a regular basis. Number three, while we can't legislate morality, we can say that the Lehrman neighborhood deserves something better than another opportunity to lose more money. The townhome site in Aspen Court will be repopulated, and those residents will need access to goods and services, not really a gaming parlor. For, I'm not opposed to gaming, or more gaming parlors in the area that offer choices in goods and services, but I don't support one in this very visible location on Washington Street, close to the very vulnerable population." That's by Diane Marlin. So that's a lot, but, you know, it's a public input moment for the requests by these individuals, and I've received these, so it's my duty to offer them to the public record.
Okay. Thank you very much. Since we don't have any other people that want to testify, we will close the hearing. Thank you all.
The meeting of the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Hall will come to order. Shall the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Presson.
Here.
So approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 9, 2016, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second. All right. Moved by Bill, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, public input. So the first public input card that I have is from Paul Deravel.
It's actually, it's actually DeBevick, but it's
DeBevick.
It's not an easy name.
Well, you need to work on your handwriting there. No, I'm just kidding. My bad. So Paul DeBevick.
So I'm Paul DeBevick. I live at 708 West California. It's a part of Urbana that's known as Wuna. I'm here actually to propose a future agenda item, and I hope to be brief. So this is Wuna. No doubt to many of you, it's the wimpy, uppity neighborhood area, but actually, in Wuna, we're just trying to protect what we have. And I appreciate that this effort, in fact, has been noticed. Here's the January 2 of this year interview of our mayor with the News Gazette. "Urbana residents next to the university have really fought for yours to keep it a residential community, and I think there's a value to preserving neighborhoods." So what's the current threat? It is the Lincoln Plaza proposed planned unit development, and how do I get rid of this bottom thing here? I don't know. So I tried to put a scale here. This is big, and this is huge. This is a five-story, 79-unit apartment complex. It's built over four residential lots. It's proposed by Green State Realty. It'd be by far the most massive structure in west Urbana. It has no place in west Urbana. So it violates the explicit language in the comprehensive plan. Here's the comprehensive plan pointing exactly to this area. "Preserve these uses as they exist while precluding further encroachment of higher-density buildings into this unique residential area." Directly from the comprehensive plan. It, in fact, fails all eight of the LaSalle criteria, which I list here. I'm not going to go through them. You'll probably be assaulted with them in some future meeting. It actually ignores the guidelines of the Lincoln-Bucy corridor. It's not compatible with the buildings. It's massive, on and on. So astoundingly, the Lincoln Plaza proposal receives positive recommendation from city staff. Here's from their memorandum to the Plan Commission. "The application is generally consistent with the goals, objective, and future land use of the 2005 comprehensive plan." So what's going on here? What does Wuna think? Here is a map of 59 households that have voiced opposition of this planned unit development, either in email or in public input to the Plan Commission. Clearly, there's a lot of people on the data It's built over four residential lots. It's proposed by Green Street Realty. It'd be by far the most massive structure in West Urbana. It has no place in West Urbana. So it violates the explicit language in the Comprehensive Plan. Here's the Comprehensive Plan, pointing exactly to this area. Preserve these uses as they exist while precluding further encroachment of higher-density buildings into this unique residential area, directly from the Comprehensive Plan. It, in fact, fails all eight of the LaSalle criteria, which I list here. I'm not going to go through them. You'll probably be assaulted with them in some future meeting. It actually ignores the guidelines of the Lincoln Bucy Corridor. It's not compatible with the buildings. It's massive, on and on. So astoundingly, the Lincoln Plaza proposal receives positive recommendation from city staff. Here's from their memorandum to the Plan Commission. The application is generally consistent with the goals, objective, and future land use of the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. So what's going on here? What does Wuna think? Here is a map of 59 households that have voiced opposition of this planned unit development, either in email or in public input to the Plan Commission. Clearly, there's a lot of people on Nevada Street, but they're all over the neighborhood. So what's going on here? Well, let's let Chris Saunders himself, Green Street Realty, tell us what's going on here. Obviously, there's a big tax benefit, and in fact, the estimate is something like $161,000. Mr. Saunders goes on, "I just read about how big a hole you guys are in." And in fact, the tax rate in Urbana is significantly higher than in Champaign. And next, Mr. Saunders, "You're begging people at Urbana to do development." Well, maybe beg was not the best choice of words here, but the real problem is, real estate speculators have contiguous lots in West Urbana that at least three other PUDs could be proposed. Would these proposals also receive a favorable recommendation? Does the City of Urbana still support the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, or has building the tax base taken priority? I suggest that this topic should be addressed by City Council. I look forward to seeing it on a future City Council agenda." Enough for the whining. Thanks for your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Could you use a better picture next time, please? Thank you. But, you know, I think that the original plan has been rejected. It's not going to go anywhere, so they're going to come back with something much different. So we're going to stick with zoning, is my prediction. So thank you for your input.
Now, you opened it up. Okay, Dennis?
My understanding is that it's a continued case in the Planning Division, so it's not... Nothing's been settled yet.
Anyone else? All right. So my next public input card is Bishop King James and the Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. Remain concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem, and they are continually concerned about that issue. Okay. My next public input card is Robin Arbiter regarding the G2 liquor license for 1509 East Washington. So these were for the previous...
We had two forms.
Okay.
I mean, you can testify again, but you think you've already testified.
I'm sorry. So she's in opposition and chooses not to address the committee? Thank you. All right.
Was it the handwriting, or you just didn't read it?
Be careful. You're going to be chairman in... Yeah, not too long.
A new tradition: heckle the chairman.
Yeah. So my next card is from Anna Barnes, who, as well, is in opposition to the G2 license for the poker room, does not choose to address the committee. Are there any further public input cards?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So I received a text asking me to read something into the record, and so public input would be the appropriate time.
Okay. So let's finish with this card from somebody in person, and then we'll go to that. Is that okay, Aaron?
Sure.
All right.
I guess.
Okay. All right. So this one is from Melinda Carr, and this is regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues and historic impact, but she does not choose to address the committee at this time. Right. Thank you for that. Eric?
Okay. So the text I received is from Janet Lund, who resides at 2410A Prairie Green Drive in Urbana. And the question is, "Can sidewalks be put on Washington East Side sooner?" So this is, I guess, relevant to Public Works. Yesterday, citizens were walking to the Walmart. My daughter, who is 16, asked, "Why do the people have to risk their lives to go to the store? Please request an earlier construction date and streetlights on Scottswood." Thank you, Janet Lund. So I'll show you the exact text, Bill, since it's referenced to your department.
All right. Dennis?
Yeah, I actually had one other input that I missed mentioning, and this has to do with the liquor license at 1509 Washington Street. It's from Mark Fitzgerald, who lives on Quentry Squire. "Please do not allow another liquor gaming joint to be open at 1509 Washington Street. The location is less than a two-minute walk from the strip club and another bar that has video gambling at the Boomerang. This location has been a magnet of trouble in the past, including drug use and shooting. Despite its street view, it lies adjacent to several family apartment buildings." And this concerns the 1509 site. "East Urbana already has plenty gambling parlors. Ask yourself if you would want another one in your neighborhood." So that's the comment from Mark Fitzgerald.
All right. Is there any further public input? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh.
Do you want to fill it out, or can I just come up?
Yeah, come on up. So please complete the card after your presentation. Thank you.
Well, the last one just hit me. I am the owner of 1509 East Washington Street. I've been in business since 2003 September at 1511 East Washington Street. I don't know if you guys were here two years ago when I was begging not to give a liquor license to 1509 because of the trouble we just heard, the shooting and crimes. I have cleaned up that corner. I was the one who was complaining at that point not to give out the liquor licenses. We have cleaned it up. As I think some of you have seen the place already, how clean we have kept it, and we are cleaning... We're still in progress. We're waiting for the budget from the state to give us some dollars to remove the tanks and finish what it looks like. It's going to look like what 1511 looks like, or better. Our proposal is not only the gaming license. I'm going to use that facility for more than just one business. We have right now an process of talking to a restaurant, fast food restaurant, Subway slash Jimmy John's type. It takes a little longer, because we just got the building, and we're going through the process, it looks like, same process I'm going through, you guys, to get the G2 license. G2 license is very lucrative business, as you guys know. I don't have to tell you front-page-headed numbers. People gamble, yes. Do I gamble? Yes. I don't know if you guys gamble or not. It's my choice how much I want to gamble. It's my choice how much I want to drink. So its next step is not to give too much liquor license, or not give too much gambling I want to develop that corner. I want to do something better. I've been there before. I'm continuously going to be there. I don't know what more can we do. I had a call came in from one of the gentlemen from Champaign, that they're thinking about putting a housing unit behind us there, a senior housing unit. And I had talked to them, how can we put something more to suit them? Right now, I have suitable business for the soccer players, and then they do come to my place, and they're safe. We have a problem there, we fix it. By fixing it, I bought it, because I put a lot of dollars in there to get rid of the problem that I had. I had a problem with that location. Shooting was happening. 300-some calls come from neighbors right that neighborhood place, zero call from my place. So I must be doing something right in a community. Continuously want to do that. I support the community. Any kind of fundraiser, they can count on me. They know that we can go there and count on this business to support the community. We've been doing it since 2003 September. We want to continuously do that. If you look at the numbers, gambling is going to go. If you don't have it, they're going to go across the street, which is Champaign. I understand all the concerns that Mr. Roberts have read, all the concerns that people have, you know, shown here, but the thing of it is, it's already here. We're not saying flooded all over. I know you have the right minds, that's why you guys are sitting over here across from me. Think about it. What's going to be the right location for Urbana? Do we have to go on 74 and Cunningham? So give us a location where you need to go. You're saying these people are not going to make it that far? I mean, I'm just asking a question and making a comment at the same time. Does that mean no more license period in Urbana? We're open to your suggestion. Where do you want me to put one? We have plenty of empty buildings. There's going to be another empty building, because here's the thing, I bought it to get rid of the trouble that we had in my neighbor. That's why I bought it. I didn't buy it to say, "Let's buy it, put this in." I bought it just so happens right now is the hottest business, or lucrative business, is poker machines. I'm also proposing a restaurant next to it. So that's all I got. If you've got any questions, I'm willing to answer.
All right. Charlie?
Yeah, thank you. When I first heard that the building had been bought and was going to be reused, was the issue of the storage tanks. So your intention is to remove the pumps and clear that, and then remodel the building?
Actually, right now, inside is completely gutted.
Right. I saw that.
We're going to get rid of that ugly sign. We're going to put the same facade that I have at 1511.
Oh, okay.
Nice look. Make it look, paint it. We're going to...
So you remove the fence and make it contiguous?
Yes, yes. We're going to tuck over the building, and it's going to look nice. Let's put it that way. It's not going to look what it's been looking like there, okay? It's going to be super nice. We're going to clean it up. It's going to be... You don't have to worry about having fencing around my property. That's what I'm trying to tell you. They can walk to my property, like they do at 1511.
I go by your property probably two, three times a week on a bike, so I'm pretty familiar with it, and it's perfectly safe. It's a very easy area to bicycle through. Occasionally, some glass in the area, but that comes with the turf. The issue I have is, given the state funding right now, is that money going to come for you to be able to remove the tanks and get that stuff out of there? Is it freed up from the state?
Not right this minute, but the people who are in the business of removing tanks, we are already doing the process, what it requires to do that. So it's not an overnight process. It's not something I can fill out a piece of paper, they'll come tomorrow and remove it. It goes through state fire marshal. They come in, they do sampling. The company who's going to remove, they come and do the sampling of the soil, and they have to give reasons why we're going to remove it to the state. They approve it, and then the dollar comes, and then the company comes and removes the tanks.
Are you going to... Okay, so you have to go through that process. Are you going to be able to do the rest of the remodeling in the meantime, and even open up businesses, even if the work isn't finished with the tanks?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be safe enough to do it. Let's put it that way. We're trying to get rid of the pumps and utilize the parking that way.
Oh, yeah, you can do all that. Yeah, okay.
So we're not going to wait and open, and then people have to go run around it.
Okay.
We're in the process of...
Yeah, so you don't have to remove... You can remove everything but the pumps for now. Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. So seeing no further public input, we will move on to presentations, budget reviews. First up is the Police Department.
As has been the direction of the mayor for the past six years, the Police Department was directed to function the upcoming 2016 budget without any additional funding requests. I'm happy to report that, once again, the department has complied with that directive. In fact, the only other budget request that was made during this entire cycle was the Finance Director said we need to keep our presentations down to less than five minutes, and I think we're at 3 minutes and 20 seconds. So hopefully, we're going to fulfill both those goals. Thanks to a great deal of work from Cassie Heldman and Deputy Chief Sylvia Morgan, and some insightful guidance from Elizabeth Hannan, the Police Department was able to rearrange personnel and funds to support the much-needed crime analyst position. This was one of the traffic study task force recommendations, and with the help of Liz Borman working on the personnel end, we are closer to making that a reality. I shared the hiring timeline with you all a few weeks ago, and we're currently in line with that goal. Several other task force recommendations involve the collaboration with community members. I can think of no better way to fulfill that recommendation than by continuing to work with the Community Coalition. That collaboration addresses the additional recommendation of engaging with the community through Walk is One. As Elizabeth previously shared with you, and I think she's going to talk more about it, the VERF was unsustainable, and working with her, we were able to readjust our operating expenses and transfer VERF to make it more functional. As a result of this rearranging, the general fund budget was increased 2.5%, but would have been slightly less than 1% without expenses shifting from the VERF. So with that glamorous presentation, Elizabeth hopefully can help us with some VERF questions, and Sylvia and I will be happy to answer any other budget questions for the Police Department.
Any questions at this time? Aaron?
Is there a timeline, Chief, on the statistician position? I know you said you were close.
Well, there is a timeline. Elizabeth Borman is working with video interviews right now. I believe it's going to be shortly. We tried to squeeze it as quickly as possible. That timeline, I think, appears shortly after July.
Charlie's retired.
Put his app in.
He didn't apply.
We'll take him.
I think that was the only one I had for the... Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Why does everybody want a piece of my retirement?
Bill?
Have you advertised for the animal control officer yet?
We have advertised. We actually had final interviews, as with everything else lately. The candidate that we were seriously looking at had some medical issues. We've expanded now. Again, poor Elizabeth Borman keeps getting all this put on her shoulders in the 11th hour, but she is submitting six new... Or interviewing via video six new folks, and we're working through that process. I don't have a timeline on that.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Charlie?
Yeah. I promised to advocate for a social worker for the department, and that's something I know we've talked about on and off through the years. Again, we're stuck with a very limited budget to do that, and I would ask that the next opportunity we have to add any personnel to the Police Department, I think that's a really important addition that's needed. I know we get a lot of help from interns now that we didn't have before.
Incredible work.
Right, yes. Yeah, that's incredibly valuable, but I think that value would be even... It would be magnified if we had a social worker on staff that could work with them and coordinate, and help be this end of that educational experience. So I would ask that that be seriously considered in the future, maybe even before next year's budget.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Next up is the Fire Department.
Sort by date modified.
Hmm.
Sort by date modified.
I'm not sure what you're talking about. Uh-huh, there it is. Okay, now that we got that taken care of. Okay, Fire Department budget this year, from our FY '16 budget was just almost 7.6 million, will be just under $8 million this year. That's a 2.41% increase, and that increase includes the VERF transfers and the VERF increases. And this, this breaks down what increases the Fire Department, non-VERF increases it experienced. One situation that we've had for many years is, our Division Chiefs were the only three positions in the city that didn't receive holiday pay. They were kinda stuck in the middle between the union 24-hour employees, who on every holiday receive 11.2 hours of pay for holiday pay, and then the 40-hour staff gets the day off for the paid holidays. And so we had these three positions that never benefited from holiday pay, and the situation is, is kind of increased in the fact that the captains, the rank just underneath them, get holiday pay, and, and the captain's pay schedule encroaches on the Division Chief's pay schedule without these. So we budgeted this $10,713 to give those three positions holiday pay. Additionally, last year, we cut $2,500 out of our maintenance for our self-contained breathing apparatus, and that includes the compressors and the, the air packs themselves. We experienced some maintenance situations the past year with the compressors, so we thought it wise to add that back in there. The self-contained breathing apparatus, they're a very important piece of safety equipment that we wanna maintain, so, so we asked to have that funding restored. Additionally, we are partnered on a grant with the other fire departments in Champaign County. It's a FEMA grant. It would be a one-time match of a 90% grant to buy some CPR machines, they're called Lucas II CPR machines. These machines will, based on our, I think 20 times last year, we performed CPR as a department, and if you've got a 10% save rate, these machines would have the potential to double that save rate, so that could transfer two to four lives per year, as far as the folks we do CPR on. And the cost of five machines is $67,000, and if awarded the grant, our cost would be $6,700. So we've included that. Additionally, we have the potential of four retirements this fall, and we just had a resignation from the Fire Department, so that's five positions to fill this year. Our academy starts in the fall, and we would like to do some over-hires anticipating those retirements this fall. So the $31,000 is to do two firefighter over-hires, it's kinda managing the risk. Obviously, it's a lot of money to overhire four, but our training academy starts the 1st of September, and the retirements most likely will not happen till later in the year, and that gives us a chance to train these positions in advance. So those are the four items, as far as, that have caused our slightly less than 1% budget increase, if you subtract the VERF. Again, this is a slide explaining the Division Chief holiday pay. Is there any questions about that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Aaron?
So the, the first one is a three divisional chief holiday pay.
Yes.
So that's some, that's $3,000, three, almost, a little over $3,000 each?
Yes.
Throughout the year for the holiday pay?
Yeah.
And they weren't receiving any money at all for holidays?
No, no, their, their job is a 24/7 job, that job has to be staffed all the time, and in our union contract, we pay the 24-hour firefighters 11.2 hours for each firefighter when a holiday happens, I think each of their eight or nine holidays. And we have, we have five positions that are 40-hour positions on the Fire Department that, you know, when a holiday comes, you get the day off with pay. And so these three individuals were kinda stuck between the 24-hour employees and the 40-hour employees, and have never received compensation for holiday, they don't get the day off, and they don't get compensation. So this kinda fixes that.
So the individuals who work get the 11 point?
11 point. Everybody does on the Fire Department, not just the ones that work.
So you get holiday pay even if you don't work?
They, they work a 24/7 shift, so they don't get holidays off. It's just every time a holiday happens, they get 11.2 hours of pay to be compensated for the holiday.
Okay. And the, those are three positions the Division Chief holiday pay for. So they were working on those days and not getting paid for that, basically?
Correct, yeah, they were just getting their regular salary. There, there was no difference in their compensation for holiday pay, or any time off.
Okay. And the $31,000 for the over-hires, you said that you anticipate, how many, five positions, you said?
We, we've had one resignation last week, and we'll have, we have the potential of four retirements before the end of the year.
And you think two will be enough to at least get you through that phase?
Yeah, we're, yeah, instead of doing four over-hires, we thought that was a little over the top, we thought if we split the difference and do two over-hires and get two in the Fall Academy, and then if we experience retirements to the level we're pretty sure we will, then we can get the other two in the Spring Academy.
And the over-hires would come from where? You just hire from the street?
They come from our hiring list. We, we test every two years, and we establish a hiring list, and so it's, our list is established through state statute, of the manner in which we do the testing and do the lists.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Bill?
Yeah, is it, is it common for Division Chiefs in other cities to get holiday pay?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, in, in that position, you can't give them the day off. I mean, if you give them the day off, you have to pay overtime to replace them, so it's more prudent just to give them the 11.2, like the union employees get. And so, yeah, anybody that's 24/7 gets compensated in almost all cities, you know, for the holiday, I think it's the nine-city holidays.
Do they have contracts that they sign, the Division Chiefs?
No, they're annual appointments by the Mayor.
So they understood when they started that they didn't get holiday pay, and now, so it's basically a raise?
Yeah, and, and really, the thing that we try to do, we try to keep a gap between the captain rank and the Division Chief rank, and without the holiday pay, it continually closes that gap. And when, when you move from the union contract to the appointed position, you lose educational incentive, which for a bachelor's degree amounts to about $1,600 a year. Those positions don't get specialty pay for the special training they've got either in hazmat investigations or technical rescue, and those positions don't get holiday pay. So when you stack all these things up, it, it's really hard for us to entice people to take that position because the compensation's not there. And I know all the Division Chiefs put, they work a 56-hour week, the union employees work 55.08 because they have Kelly days that the Division Chiefs also don't get. So there's a lot of things in the union contract that the 24-hour employees get to take advantage of, that the Division Chiefs lose that when they make that jump to an appointed position.
Then, just one follow-up. I noticed that, I just noticed that the Police Department underspent by about $400,000, and your budget is just a little bit less, and you only underspent by $200,000, so I don't know if you knew that there was a contest going on, but you don't get your bonus.
Oh, okay.
Do you know why you underspent the $200,000? Is, is that pretty typical?
Is that the total budget, you mean, or?
Yeah, from, it looks like the, the projected spending this year will be about $200,000 under budget, so is that common? Is that about right?
Yeah, probably. I mean, I think we're budget, we're budgeted fairly tight in the Fire Department.
Just from gaps in hiring and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Maybe underspending on replacement equipment or something?
Right, right. And then, it looks like that if we, if we're gonna have a budget shortfall, we just kind of, we do the budget amendments and try to move money to make it work. So it's, our budget's pretty tight every year.
Okay, thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, Chief, I assume with, with the resignation, you automatically will be filling that position into the academy this fall, right?
Yes, yeah, it'll start for the Fall Academy.
Will you be looking, do you ever hire already-trained office, firefighters, or can that, you know, when you have an opening like this?
Yeah, by union contract, we send them to the Resident Academy, the six-week academy, in the fall and the spring, and the firefighters that we can put on the street, if they've got the Certified Firefighter, Firefighter II Academy, we can put them on an engine and work them, but they still have to attend the next Resident Academy that happens, and it'll start just after Labor Day.
Okay, have you ever had an opportunity to, have we, have we ever done five hires in a year in the Fire Department?
That's quite a few. I mean, it's-
Is the list that long that have qualified at this point? Or are you gonna be retesting?
No, we've got, I think, 50 on our list right now.
Aaron?
Just while you're here, is that list, you just take the top five people, or do you just get to pick and choose how, what you, what the needs are?
No, we, we consider the top five people or 5%, or, yeah, I think it's the top five or 5% by state statute. So if we have a list of 50, I can only consider the top five on the list. And, and statute says I should follow the order of the five unless one of the five has certain training or, or certain things about that person that would, that would meet the Fire Department's needs. And one of those things, if I needed to hire somebody today, and they need to have firefighter, Certified Firefighter II, I can look at that top five and grab the first one that's got Certified Firefighter II and put them to work. Otherwise, I have to wait till I get that person to academy. So that, that would be a reason for jumping in, through that top five.
Are there any bonus points that people get on the test or the scoring and stuff like that?
There are, yeah. We have a total of 26 bonus points for testing, and our bonus points include state mandated five points for military service. The city does five points if you're a resident of Urbana. We do five points if you're a paramedic, or three points if you're an MT-Basic, so that's an either-or. You get three points for community service, and that's any type of community service that's verified, and we give three points for 60 credit hours.
But you don't have to go through them all.
So that's, that kinda adds up to that whole 26, and that, that helps put people to the top of the list that, you know, that can be successful in their job.
Okay, I'll be reaching out to you soon then.
Okay, thanks.
Bill?
I had one more that I meant to ask earlier, was, I know earlier we had the, we'd never had a discussion, but you guys had a discussion about how service areas overlap with Champaign on campus, and there was some discussion with Champaign taking over the private, private property that we had been serving that were just six blocks down the street from the fire station. Has that been resolved, and what was the resolution, and did that have any budget impact?
It has the potential of lowering our Met-Cad bill, it just depends on how many, the reduction of calls in that area. And Champaign now, for a couple of weeks, have been running those private calls, and so far, we're, like, wait and see on how this works out, but the campus engine is still running third response and some cars, the closest ones to that station, whereas some of those cars, previously, they were first response. And when you move farther out from the Wright Street, Sixth Street, Fifth Street area, when you go farther west, then the campus engine goes to fifth response. It picks up the engines on, the downtown engines and any engines on either Bradley and Prospect or Devonshire and Prospect before it picks up the campus engine.
Okay, and are you guys, are you monitoring the response time on that? Is that, or will you be looking at that, just, is there some process of going over how this works out and seeing if it's working?
Yeah, I, I would think that the Champaign Fire Department would want to review what it does to the response in their private buildings. Now, all the campus buildings are still getting the quickest response through the campus engine, but the private properties, the Champaign properties are getting the closest Champaign unit, as opposed to the campus engine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, I, I have a quick question. So you mentioned earlier that, you talked about a 55-hour work week.
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Our, our employees get two Kelly days a year, and so those are-
Can you tell people what that is?
Yeah, Kelly day is an unpaid day, and, so it's not a vacation day, it's an unpaid day, and the purpose of the day is to lower the number of hours worked per pay period. Okay, and, so I know a lot of fire departments have six Kelly days, eight Kelly days, our, our department has two Kelly days, and so it, it brings the work week down to 55.08 hours as opposed to 56 hours. And they still make the same amount of money, so it's, their hourly wage goes up to compensate for that, but that was negotiated in the contract, a couple, two, three contracts ago.
Okay, but, so I, I guess what I'm getting at is, most people in their jobs work, well, if you're in government, it's 37 and a half, which is considered full-time, but in the real world, it's more like 40, 40-plus. So you're saying that firefighters actually work 55 hours per week, so they're working 15 hours more per week than the average private sector worker?
Yes.
Okay, and, so can you characterize a typical work week for a firefighter, for us?
Well, firefighter works a 24-hour shift and then gets a 48-hour shift off, so that computes to about 10, 24-hour shifts a month that they work. And, so when you're, when you're working, you know, 24 hours every third day, that's eight hours a day, seven days a week. I mean, if you would spread it out and not do it all at once, so that's basically what the shift is.
Okay, so I just, my point being, it's, it's something to keep in mind, that these folks are on-call, therefore, working 15 hours a week, on average, more than your average full-time worker.
Yes.
Okay.
That's their schedule.
Mayor?
The city of Urbana work week is 40 hours. It's 37 and a half at the county, but the city is 40 hours.
I didn't mean to characterize everyone like that, but-
Just to be clear.
As, as most of us know, the state is 37.5, and they've dug in real hard on that. So I'm glad to know that Urbana is more progressive than the state in terms that, in terms of what a work week ought to be. All right. So Public Works is next. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
I do have the Public Works Senior Management Team here tonight, too, in case there are any questions that you may have for them, and what I'll do is highlight the more significant changes in the Public Works Department, which largely hover around the facility needs and within the city. First of all, Fire Station 2, which is on South Fila Road, has a roof 10, 20 years old, and it's needing some restoration work, so we have in the budget $16,000 for that roof, for restoration. Fire Station Number Three, which is on North Lincoln Avenue, has a roof about 24 years old, and this is a $50,000 roof restoration that's needed, again, due to repairs, leaks, things of that sort. Public Works, our roof there has a little less involved, but still needs repairs. That roof is 22 years old. City building, carpeting, flooring, tile, we have various states of disrepair of the carpeting, floor covering in this building. carpeting floor covering in this building. We're wanting to replace that, and some of the budget estimates we're receiving would be about $47,000. Fire Station One has a need for major washroom repairs, and that estimate, we don't have at this juncture, but there is money in our budget to hopefully cover it. Landscape Recycling Center, two bus trips ago, we toured this facility at the landfill site. We have money to at least hire an architect to come up with a new plan to address the very limited spaces there and inadequate facilities for men's and women's washroom and locker room and a very small kitchen table, lunchroom, breakroom area for as many as 15, 16 people in the summertime. We are providing an additional $25,000 for contract removal of Emerald Ash Borer trees. These are the larger diameter trees that are more suitable for a contractor to remove since they're equipped with cranes and heavier equipment. Windsor Road and High Cross Road has medians, grass medians. There's no additional landscaping at this time, but because of the size of those medians, we do have contract mowing, additional costs involved. And that estimate is about $10,000 a year. We're not going to be mowing weekly like we would do around this building or a public works facility or what have you, but still, that's an additional cost that we're incurring. Asshole overlay projects, we have an additional $250,000, a one-time transfer that's available to us. And this year, we plan to resurface Mumford Street, west of Anderson, Race Street, between California and Washington and north and south of Florida Avenue for 100 or 200 feet or so. And then Vine Street, just the northbound lane where it's rough between Colorado and Florida. Our department, for another fiscal year, we're still 1.5 FTE reduction. That's a full-time right-of-way engineering technician we do not have, and about five seasonal summertime employees we do not have. And this is for another year. There's also continued reduction in training and education funds. Our budget increased 6%, but similar to what police and fire budget impacts are, those are largely due to VERF transfers of $177,000. There's a supplemental capital improvement fund is no longer, and so that $130,000 has been shifted into the general fund 060 budget. And then we've established a small VERF fund, which is for smaller equipment, less than $5,000 each. It's about $18,400. If those one-time cost increases were not included, our increase would be about 1.6%. And that is it.
Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more comment. I don't have a slide for it, but in TIF Two budget... Excuse me, TIF One budget, we do have $25,000 programmed to improve the mini park at the northwest... Northeast corner of Water and Broadway across from the Black Dog Restaurant. This was a reduction or deletion during the boneyard improvement projects, but we do have funds available. And this would be a cooperative project with the parking lot owned by Black Dog just to the north, whereby we've already entered into an agreement where we're selling them five feet of land to score off their parking lot for 90-degree parking, and then we're going to upgrade that mini park. And that's work that we would do next year. So, any questions?
Aaron?
So, Bill, the $25,000... Excuse me, for the tree removal, how does that work?
Well, how it works is we, right now, have $12,000 budgeted for contract work. So we go out for bids every year or two-year bid for tree removal contractors. And as we identify trees that need to come down, most of them are ashes, but they could be other variety of trees, too, in very poor condition. Arbor has like a nine-point scale, and if you're a tree, like an eight or nine-point scale, that's a tree of imminent hazard threat to the public, so it needs to come down.
So I'm saying, how... Does this contract the work to remove trees that are on city property?
I'm sorry, absolutely correct, yes. Parkway, city trees, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, I'm more, you know, the... In general, the budget's pretty boring, once you understand all the shifts shifting around a VERF and the rearrangements that Elizabeth made. Since it's so much like past budgets, all the excitement is gone. I'm sure it's tough on all the department heads to figure out how to keep doing what they're doing. The big one that struck me was actually in the projects that aren't funded in the capital improvement plan. Now, a number of those are based on future development that might occur there. For example, you know, East Florida, or the, you know, the East Florida extension or fixing that little section of Washington. You know, when something happens there, we'll have a source of funding probably to do that. The one big missing item is Florida Avenue, where we've rearranged the parking or turned it into no parking and moved people over to get a little longer life out of that surface. I'd really like to see us at least start planning for that project, designing it, having it shovel-ready, and then peddling it to our... Both our state representatives and our federal representatives for funding, because that road is in really sad shape. It's an important road across that part of Urbana, and, you know, catastrophic failure could happen at any time, really, especially if we have another bad winter. So, you know, I'd just like to know what we can do to address Florida Avenue.
So noted.
Bill?
In the planning and mapping part, I saw the $37,000 for GIS consortium. I know we were paying that before. Did that come out of a different budget before? Do you know?
Was that community developments or...? Oh, that's right, okay. There is a BO9, which is a supplemental budget I talked about earlier, in fact, in this slide here. And that $130,000. So we just moved that into a more appropriate location, but that's been an annual fee that we've been paying.
Right. And then for the new system to keep track of the roads, $100,000. Is that cost based on the miles of roads that we have? Do other cities pay the same amount for that? Like, does Champaign pay more because they have more roads?
It's certainly tied into the miles or lane miles of streets for the analysis is concerned. But just to, again, go over, this would be a tremendous tool for Craig and his staff to aid us in our inventory of street assets, would help us set goals, help us show better progress of the street ratings. It gives us historical condition data, which is not easily retrievable. It certainly can convey to you, to others, the impact of funding or lack of funding or additional funding, what they can do to the pavement condition index for the entire network. It helps streamline the project selection for us with such a system, identify hotspots that we may or may not be aware of. But to answer your question, it's really largely tied to, yes, the miles of street, the lane miles of streets that one has. That's what that cost is referenced to.
Just one more. I noticed it looks like the work... The budget for brick sidewalks was carried over from last year, and we have a major project this year. Is that right, from the capital improvement plan?
The next street that we have...
The brick sidewalks?
I'm sorry.
The brick sidewalks?
Yes, there's about $100,000 worth, or...
So we've done something major in Westervan, or in Eastervan, I mean?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any work done on brick sidewalks last... This fiscal year?
This fiscal year?
Yeah.
I don't think so. No. The last one we did was two years ago on North Race Street, north of University Avenue. And it's a block that we totally redid, the brick sidewalk work up there between Park and University.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Aaron?
So I wanted to sort of raise an issue also as far as Lincoln Avenue from basically University all the way up to Green Street. Is that... That's not covered in the MCOR project, though, is it?
It is not.
It is not? Because it's in pretty bad shape, and it gets tremendous amount of traffic as well. So I don't necessarily want to get into what road is more important than other roads and stuff like that. So you guys use a scale, basically, to determine the expediency or the importance of a particular road. So when you look at Florida Avenue from, I guess, Vine to Lincoln?
Yes.
And you look at Lincoln from University to Green? What... Which street? Are they in about the same condition? Or, I mean, when you have it, how do you gauge that? And how do you determine which one you're going to do first?
At Craig's presentation a couple Mondays ago, he addressed the suggested year for that stretch of Lincoln Avenue. I don't have that at my fingertips, but I think it might be 2017 or 2018. But to answer your question, that stretch of Lincoln is more suited for a million and resurfacing work. There might be some selected full-depth patching. The problem with Florida Avenue is basically it's a failed pavement. It needs to be reconstructed. So that's the distinct difference. And when you have a pavement that's old and deteriorated, and the base is deteriorated, that's a very large construction cost. And that's the big difference. Lincoln Avenue further north also is scheduled for a million resurfacing from Killarney north up to the more or less dead end. And that, too, is a stretch in Lincoln Avenue. So there is a lot of Lincoln Avenue scheduled work in the next two, three years.
Okay. And the final bond payment on Windsor Road is going to be... Is it going to be done this year? When is that going to be over with?
I think we're in our second year of 10, so we have...
Second year of 10.
So we have several more years of over $300,000.
And the last one for me is just to point out that there's a pretty profound stretch of street from Fair... Between Fairview and Sunset on Bucy that could, you know, whenever you wanted to come by there and repave that street, that's... I happen to live on that street, it's 11 on Bucy between Sunset and Fairview. Just thought I'd throw that out there, get my bid in, too. Oh, thank you, Bill, I appreciate it.
Sure. Dennis?
Looking at the street lighting map that you have, okay, I see the project on Kinch, street lighting on Kinch, and we looked at that when we had our bus tour. Can you also tell me what you see happening for the longer section on Cunningham, which has also got the crosshatching for, I suppose it's called, projected project area? Is that a project that you think is going to actually be initiated in 2017?
I'm sorry, Cunningham Avenue street lighting, is that...
Yeah, I'm looking at a chart, street lighting for your E, and it looks like Cunningham Avenue, a section of it has got the same hatching as a projected project area. But that's just theoretical at this point? There's not a...
Are you on page 32?
32. Yes, page 32.
The parallel lighting up by the interstate, I mean, that's existing lighting.
Right. But below that, the section has the same diagonal crosshatching that says it's projected project area, but there's not a date associated with that yet, is that correct? From Country Club South to University Avenue, the length, really, of Cunningham.
Okay. At this point in time, there is no... I mean, there's existing lighting there now.
Right.
So there's no near-term plan to replace that existing lighting on Cunningham Avenue.
And is it cross-hatched because that's Cunningham Avenue beautification corridor? Is that why that's...
I would have to ask the author of this map, who's not here tonight.
Yeah, okay. I just thought that maybe that it meant that you were actually moving that forward in the near future.
To my knowledge, no.
All right.
I'd like to think that might be a typo.
Yeah, I guess it must be, then, yeah.
I think it is.
That that got cross-hatched, yes. Okay, thanks.
We did, in 2013, put new lighting up by...
To the north.
Kenyon and Perkins, yes.
Well, wishful thinking always, you know. Maybe it's meant to be, and a crosshatching is like a, you know...
There's many unlit areas that need to be addressed.
Any further questions? Well, I would just say, yeah, I have new lighting in front of my business on North Cunningham, and very appreciative, and an outstanding eight-foot multi-use, is that what we call it, sidewalk? Where I just can't wait for bicyclers to run into pedestrians. I'm just kidding, it's plenty wide. So what I'm hoping is that the bike racks that I was required to install in front of my property, which are under roof, by the way, they're Cadillac bike racks, I hope they start to get used before they rust out.
Next rainy day, I'll be up there.
Please do, and buy some barbecue while you're at it.
I've used one. I had to kick a kid off of it first, though, because they were playing on it.
Yeah, well, at least somebody's getting some use out of it. All right. Okay, well, thank you, Bill. And so the library is next.
Thank you very much for your attention tonight, I appreciate it. As we look at the Urbana Free Libraries' proposed budget of just over $3.8 million, you'll notice, as is normal, and that should disappear any second at the bottom... Oops, there it goes. That 80% of the library's budget comes from local property taxes. So that is a really large percentage of our budget coming from local property taxes. And so it makes a big difference as to how much we receive. And so there is a slight increase of 2.5% in property taxes budgeted, given the EAV increase that is expected. 11% is a different contribution that the city makes with the IMRF, FICA, and Medicare, and then the portion of the AMRIN funding that comes in through the city. So 91% of the library's funding comes one way or the other through the city, and we are very appreciative of that. The other are things like cafe sales, overdue fines and fee payment, people buying non-resident cards. If you look at the expenses, it is very similar one year to the next. We are putting more money in our fund balance lines. This year, in addition to putting money aside a small bit, but a bit, for our capital expenditures, we budgeted to set aside money for future IT expenses. It was a priority that the board set at our IT technology plan. And so we set aside $26,000 this next year because we know over the next 30 years, it could be at one point some million dollars in expenses outside of our yearly spending. So we are looking to the future and setting some money aside. Our materials funding has remained fairly flat over the past couple of years, given that we were receiving less in tax money now than we received in 2013, 2014. We've been able to keep the materials budget flat, but as you understand with inflation, that's actually, to some extent, a decrease in the spending that we can do with that funds. Staffing has actually stayed fairly flat as well. We've done that through being more efficient in the work that we're doing and how we do it, and who does the particular kinds of work, reevaluating how many people need to be at each service point, and then we have not replaced all positions as they have become vacant. We do see budgetary pressures on our revenue. There are some outside, as are with anything but outside pressures. The state per capita grants to libraries this year, we were originally told to estimate $52,000. That's been resized down to $32,000. We do not expect that we'll receive any of that money this fiscal year, and maybe we won't receive it at all. So we will make that up in savings elsewhere. We budgeted next year for $25,000, so half of what we are told to budget for this year. So we don't know if we'll receive that money either, and we have a plan in place... either, and we have a plan in place in case that money doesn't come. But for us, $52,000 is a lot of money to not receive. That, that does make a difference for us. Pending legislation may cap property tax income. So, there are different bills in the Senate and the House right now that would tap, again, cap property taxes. And that would have a very large effect on our public library if that were the case, since eighty percent of our income, eighty percent of the revenue is property taxes. Not being able to go up with the EAV would, would make a difference for us. Also, personal property taxes, there was an error in how money was distributed. So, it appears that the library might have received $11,000 more than it should have, as many bodies, including the city, received extra money. We don't know what the repayment plan like that will be. So, $11,000 over the next couple of years is something we'll probably have to repay back as well, in addition to potentially receiving less money from that, um, income source. So, we are watching these things to see how they will impact us in the future. The good news is people love their library and use it a lot. Our circulation is up 30,000 items year-to-date, including Darth Vader, a guest appearance at our Star Wars event we had earlier this year. Over 700,000 items have been checked out so far this year. Our programming's also up by over a thousand attendees. We've had over 660 programs and over 25,000 attendees. So, the library is being used a lot. We've been very good stewards of the resources we have been provided, and we're very pleased to be able to do that. But it is very tight. Um, it's very tight. And so, I am very appreciative with the Urbana love that is potentially being shown. The $125,000 that could be allocated to help fund HVAC repairs or replacement of our HVAC system from 1975, we're doing what we can do within the budget we have to set money aside for future capital expenditures. But it could be $250,000 to replace the system. We are having it evaluated by the city's HVAC consultant as we speak. We hope to get a report back soon so we can see what the recommendations are. And then we will hopefully be able to pay for that because we know it's not an efficient system as much as it could be, as much as it could be. And we know that if it fails, we'd have to close the library until a repair could be made. And that's not something that any of us want to see. So, I appreciate the mayor's, um, inclusion of that potential funding into the budget considerations. Also, we appreciate the consideration of $30,000 for the hiring of a development professional at the library. It, the foundation as well is interested in the library having a development professional on staff. The library raised, um, they raised 2.5 million dollars to help with the addition that went on the library back in 2005. The foundation and hopefully the city council sees the value in having a professional on staff in an ongoing basis to help us prepare for the future. There are other large capital expenditures that we will be facing with the porch, um, with working with the windows and the historic part of the building that's almost 100 years old to make those more energy efficient. The roof is 10 years old, carpeting, all those kinds of things that you need to do in an old building and, in a 10-year-old building as well. So, we appreciate your consideration. We are doing the best that we can with the funds we have, and we're doing, I would say, a darn good job. Any questions?
Questions? Eric?
So, this is sort of a general question. Maybe Elizabeth might want to chime in on this. But it seems to me that, well, I guess you're doing a very interesting and I think a good thing is that you're, you're anticipating capital or one-time IT costs.
Mm-hmm.
And setting aside a certain amount of dollars each year that will accumulate towards that, um, eventuality. And we haven't, we, but that's not a general principle in budgeting across the city. Uh, we, we see lots of, uh, items, one-time items in the, uh, in budgets. And I, I, I guess I wonder, you know, should one, should, should this be standard? And, and so, that's a very open-ended question. It doesn't relate precisely to the library, but.
So, who would like to respond first?
I, I think it should be standard, and I, I think now for the most part it is. I mean, that's exactly what the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund is all about. You're always going to see some one-time expenditures in the budget for, um, other projects that maybe don't quite fit into that model, um, transfers for capital expenditures and such.
Okay. Okay, so we're, we're really there, we're almost there, we're on our way there, yeah, okay.
When you approve the budget, I think we'll be there.
Okay.
Mayor, does you have a follow-up to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Eric that, um, that's what our whole emphasis is on, is looking to the future and make sure that we don't just budget for this year, but we look to the kinds of things that need to be done. And that means having a life cycle for all the equipment. And all the people that have been listening that wonder what VERF is, it's Vehicle Equipment Reserve Fund. Um, so, everything that we own, we know how, what the expected life is, and we have to plan for the replacement of that. And that, you know, then we have estimates on roads. Uh, when we get Windsor Road done, I mean, that's only going to last for a certain amount of time. So, we have to plan for that. And we will get it done.
Dennis?
This is kind of a smaller question. Um, you're, you've talked about, uh, IT upgrades and improvements. And I'm wondering, uh, is the library, um, thinking about looking for different kinds of search engines for, um, to search for items that are in the collection? Sometimes I've been sort of frustrated by looking for something that I think I know the answer to or the exact name of. But because one has to have the exact name or the exact spelling of the search, um, there's not any, there's very, I don't think I've ever found any reciprocal, um, um, assistances to search, the search engine questions that you enter for, um, titles or movie titles or authors and things like that. It's not exactly like a Google search which suggests and prompts, uh, likely things you might be needing, might be, um, searching for, but you don't have it exactly correct. So, I'm just thinking that whether you're doing, um, if you're wedded to the current search, um, program, is it come from the state? And is it one that's used by all libraries? Or do you have, um, the ability to explore other, um, methods of searches?
We do have the ability to look at other search engines. This is a system called Polaris, and we're in a shared system with the Champaign Public Library. And then the Illinois-Hartland Library System, which covers basically downstate Illinois. All those libraries are also on Polaris on a shared system as well. So, we have the flexibility if Champaign and Urbana chose to go elsewhere, we could make that choice. I can show you some tips and tricks for being able to use the system.
More efficiently.
If you misspell a word, it does give you some trouble, but I can show you some ways to use the searching mechanism to your benefit.
So, okay, basically, you're going to stick with what you have, and we're just going to be learning perhaps how to use it smarter?
Well, I have not had a request from anyone other than you to change systems. So, it's not something that was at the top of our radar of immediate needs.
I catch you.
But I noted that you, I made notes about your questions and comments.
Oh, thanks. I love the library. It's been supportive of certainly, um, community events that I attend, uh, on a regular basis. Um, music at the library is always exciting. Seeing the students and, um, you know, young people working in the creative labs downstairs during the daytime is always, uh, an interesting thing to walk through. So, um, uh, just congratulations. And I know budgeting is tight, but, um, so far so good, I think.
Thank you.
Aaron?
So, just one, uh, follow-up on the, the person you said for the $30,000 a year was going to do, what was the, the focus of that, um, that hire? And that person would do what again for the library?
They would be a development director or development manager. They would do the fundraising for the library, but not just fundraisers generally develop a plan for us. So, we don't, for example, have, um, an opportunity for people to put the library in their will if they wanted to do that, which people actually do like to do. So, we'd like to give people opportunities for giving, and this person could help us create those.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you, Celeste.
And thanks to Chris Shear and Kathy Wicks for being here with me tonight.
All right. So, that concludes the presentations. Uh, we'll move to staff reports. Uh, financial policies is the first staff report.
This could be the last time you have to hear about the budget this year. Okay, we'll probably amend it. So, as, you all had the opportunity to discuss with me some proposed financial policies, oh, probably several months ago now. And we've actually included the proposed policies in your budget documents, beginning on page nine. It's a fairly short, three-page, um, statement of financial policies which should grow over time. There's also a resolution in the back of the proposed budget document on page 249, and we will put this on a future agenda for approval. So, I want to just, just remind you why it's important to have financial policies. We need counsel. That's, okay. We need counsel to establish a framework and provide guidance for development of the budget. So, things like, um, focusing on long-term planning, setting goals for reserves, defining what it means to have a balanced budget for the city of Urbana. We want to institutionalize good financial management practices. They shouldn't be here today and gone tomorrow. We should put them in writing, have them approved by the council, and followed for the long term. Also, having strong financial policies will support a good bond rating and could potentially reduce our cost of borrowing in the future. It promotes long-term strategic thinking and decision-making. It helps us manage risks to our financial condition and also helps us to comply with established best practices. So, the first policy we've proposed is on long-term financial planning. And what we're suggesting is that we require an updated financial forecast annually. This provides context for budget recommendations and decisions. An early look at the big picture allows for consideration of corrective actions, such as budget reductions or revenue increases. And in the best case, it gives us time for thoughtful planning for new initiatives. We'd like to have that opportunity sometime before too long. The second proposal is regarding the definition of a balanced budget. The proposed definition for the general fund is we want recurring revenues to equal recurring expenditures. This ensures that we're building a budget that's sustainable over the long term. For example, we would not fund new positions with revenue that is not expected to continue into the future. This is just smart decision-making. For other funds, the definition is a little bit different, but generally expenditures don't exceed revenues and beginning of year fund balance. And so, for example, this might apply in capital funds where we might carry funds over for several years before paying for a large capital improvement project. So, this, this chart shows you how that looks for our general fund currently. You can see the FY15 actual, the FY16 estimate. And here is our FY17 proposed budget. Our recurring revenues are 33.1 million. Our recurring expenditures are 32.4 million, which is about 98% of recurring revenue. Therefore, this fits our definition of a balanced budget. In terms of reserves, the purpose of reserves is to give us a cushion, sorry, for economic downturns, cash flow needs, unanticipated needs, and allow us to provide stable tax rates. We're recommending that we have general fund reserves of at least 15% of recurring expenditures. Also, that we require plan to rebuild reserves if it dips below that level.
Thank you, Bill.
And that we would allow that reserve to dip below 10%, only if there was some kind of catastrophic need. Think, uh, Urbana tornado. God forbid, that should happen again. And this shows our reserves in the general fund. Oh.
Yeah, quick question. So, where do the, where do those reserves show up in the budget? Is that part of the 98% that's?
Um, no, it, it shows up in the bottom line on the general fund.
On the general fund.
Statement. Yeah, I can point that out to you later. Um, so, this shows our fund balances in the general fund over a period of four years, including the estimate for the current year and the FY17 proposed budget. The green line is the proposed policy limit. So, you can see that in the FY17 proposed budget, our 6.9 million fund balance is well over that proposed limit. Um, there are some good reasons to be at that level in the short term. Obviously, we've got, we don't have a state budget yet. We don't know when we might. Um, and we're awaiting a decision about the hospital property tax issue. So, our fund balance in the proposed budget currently sits at about 21% of recurring, um, or, yeah, 21, 21% of recurring expenditures. So, in reserves and other funds, we've suggested some specific policies, particularly in relation to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, which Eric Jacobson just asked about. We want to have adequate reserves for planned replacement of equipment. We want to update those projections annually. And we've also established a definition of capital assets as equipment with a purchase price of $5,000 or more and a useful life of five years. Just to clarify what belongs in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund and what belongs in the operating budget. In the retained, oh, sorry.
Does, um, IT equipment, computers, are, are they, are they considered to have a useful life, life of five years, or is it typically shorter?
They generally don't fit the definition of capital, but we have a slightly different method of dealing with those. So, um, in the retained risk fund, we establish reserves for workers' compensation liability claims. We've suggested that we have a periodic actuarial review to help us establish appropriate reserves. So, right here, I'm showing you, this goes back to, um, Eric Jacobson's question about the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund. And this demonstrates some of, um, Sophie Pham, our accountant's, work on projecting these expenses out over 25 years and determining what level of transfers we need. So, the green line shows us projected fund balances, which is up and down as we, as we contribute funds and as we make purchases. These bars at the bottom show the annual contributions. And this part up here in blue is the additional contributions that we determined we needed, um, over the next three years from the general fund to make the whole thing work over the long haul. So, you can see the totals are higher, some were over 2 million for a few years, and they dropped down to a more normal level, which grows over time at about 2% annually. Um, but you can see in years where we have large purchases, that fund balance can drop significantly. You look like you have a question.
Yeah. This is way, way speculative. But suppose that we and the rest of society decided that we had to make big investments in getting off of fossil fuels. So, I guess that would just throw everything really, I, I mean, so that you suddenly had to get vehicles that, uh, that didn't run on fossil fuels. Uh, that would, that would really, that would make things very different, wouldn't it?
It, yes. Um, it's hard, hard to say what the impact on our cost of replacements would be. I don't think that's something that would happen suddenly, though. I suspect we'd have a number of years to plan for that. But, you know, as you can see, we have some very expensive pieces of equipment in our inventory. Um, for example, a ladder truck in the fire department would probably be our most expensive piece of equipment. Those are about a million dollars each, and we have two of those in our fleet. One, no, he says one. So, but even a, a pumper, like you saw out here, um, a couple of weeks ago, is probably half, a little bit over half a million dollars. So, the planning is very important. In terms of property taxes, our long-term goal is to maintain a property tax rate consistent with the city of Champaign. We want to be competitive in terms of the cost of owning real estate. Obviously, we, we are only about 12.7% of the total property tax rate. We can try and influence the other taxing bodies, but we definitely want to do our part. Currently, our rate's a little bit higher, $1.355 versus their rate is $1.3152. We want to work our way down to that rate. And then the property tax levy, of course, is made up of a number of pieces. In the pension funds, um, currently, we're levying taxes to provide 90% In the pension funds, currently, we're levying taxes to provide 90 percent funding by 2040, which is consistent with state law, and we're providing a small percentage of funding from personal property replacement tax, which is also consistent with state law. I'm going to, I'm going to show you here where we are now. This is our fire pension funding, comparing downstate communities with 30,000 to 50,000 population and pension fund assets of $10 million. That's important because there are different rules for pension funds with different levels of assets, in terms of how they can invest. So, you can see, we have a number of cities here that we're comparing to. Urbana's up here in the blue bar. We are currently 85.3 percent funded in our fire pension fund. Not perfect, 100 percent would be great, but pretty darn good in the big picture. In terms of, sorry.
Can we back up? So, where are we relative to Springfield and Champaign?
I can look that up and get it to you. But I think we're, we're probably close with Champaign, although they are taking a more aggressive approach to reach, to getting to a higher level of funding. But currently, I think we're pretty close.
Okay, well, in my humble opinion, I think Champaign always ought to be a comparable in these type of things. So, in the future, I would request that. I would assume that everyone else would be interested in that as well.
Sure.
But I think Springfield's another interesting comp.
In terms of police pension funding, same comparison. As you can see here, we're still up near the top of this list at 73.6 percent funding in the police pension fund. And police pension is actually, of our three pension funds that we pay into, police, fire, and IMRF, that is actually the least well-funded in relation to their liabilities. In addition, we levy property taxes for the library. We're recommending that you levy based on the budget approved by the city council. For 2016, that will require a levy of $3.07 million, which will be a 2.5 percent increase. It's very difficult for them to not know when they set their budget, what their next levy is going to be, just because of the timing of receipt of property tax revenues. And then, the corporate levy is basically whatever's left at that target tax rate. And we allocate all of the corporate levy to pay for public safety services. Just a quick look at the library property tax rate here. Since 2005 up to 2015, you can see that it hovered below 50 cents for a very long time, and then about 2011, it started increasing a little bit. Just for comparison purposes, if the library had been constrained to the 2009 tax rate, if we levied for them based on a specific tax rate, the 2015 levy would be 2.6 million versus nearly 3 million, a difference of $367,000. And that's the reason why I wouldn't recommend setting a specific tax rate for the library. That's one of the things that I think was an issue for the library over in Champaign, that their funding policy set a specific tax rate. We recommend some specific policies for capital improvements, including a definition of capital improvements, which I could not find anywhere. So, Bill and I talked about this a bit, and we defined it as a project or activity with the cost of $10,000 or more for construction, renovation, acquisition of land, infrastructure or buildings, with an expected life of at least 10 years. In the capital improvement fund, we're recommending that we increase funding annually by at least the increase in the construction cost index, just to maintain the same level of buying power with those funds, that we use those funds only to pay for capital improvements, so no more transferring money to the capital improvement fund and then transferring it out to the supplemental capital improvement fund to pay for operating expenditures. Also, that we should consider additional one-time transfers or increasing the base amount of the transfer when we're able to do that. Stormwater and sewer improvement funds, those are enterprise funds that were established to provide ongoing maintenance. It should be our policy that we provide, that we establish fees to provide funding consistent with the long-term plans for those funds. So, we talked about this just a few weeks ago with the fee schedule. And the state and local motor fuel tax funds, obviously, those are restricted to pay for transportation improvements. I provided some very basic debt policies, which we will need to expand upon, but generally, we want to use long-term borrowing for capital projects that can't be funded from current resources. Those would be improvements with a useful life of 25 years or more. We would never want to have maturities that exceed the useful life of the improvement, so we wouldn't be paying for a project with a 30-year life over 40 years. And, in addition, we want debt service payments not to exceed 10 percent of recurring general fund revenue. So, the reason for this is that general fund is always the fallback. If we think we're going to pay bonds with TIF revenue and the TIF revenue doesn't materialize, we'd be falling back on the general fund to make those payments. So, that's the reason for establishing that limitation. Here you can see, and this is also in the back of your budget book, where we currently are with our debt service payments, we're a little over 1.2 million. The proposed limit would be 3.3 million, so providing we could identify a source of funds to pay the debt service, under that policy, we could issue additional debt. Future plans, this is a work in progress, and it probably will always be a work in progress. We need to develop the debt policy further. We need to add some specific requirements for evaluating user fees. We need to add language on investments and grant-funded activities. This is something that I will ask you to review annually, and that normally would happen, probably in the fall or winter, before we really get into developing the budget. So, questions?
Bill?
I know we don't do a lot of it, but as far as earmarking funds goes, I guess we do a little bit, well, with fees, we do stormwater and motor fuel tax, but I know some cities set aside a certain percentage of sales tax or other revenues and earmark it for a specific project. Is that something that should go in the financial policies? Or is it something other cities put in? Is there some logic to doing that or not doing it? Is there, are there things to think about there?
Well, yeah, I think we do do that in some ways. So, for example, the local motor fuel tax revenue goes into the local motor fuel tax fund, and we've said that we want to use that only to pay for transportation improvements. So, I mean, I think sometimes that's appropriate, and we can set policies related to that. Obviously, you don't want to earmark everything so that you've got your budget so tied up you don't have any flexibility.
I guess if we were considering earmarking funds for something, is there some strategy or logic we should follow to see if it meets a certain criteria in order to do that, or is it just kind of up to us to figure that out?
Well, it is a policy decision, so it's up to you, but I think I'd have to know a little bit more about what you might want to propose, and I could make a suggestion.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron?
So, you said that it looks like there's space for, if we had to, if we agreed to issue more debt, and you said that it was based upon 10 percent of the entire, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, 10 percent of general fund revenue. We wouldn't want our debt service payments, not the amount of outstanding debt, but the payments to exceed 10 percent of our general fund revenue. But in addition, we shouldn't be issuing debt unless we've specifically identified the funds to repay the debt. And that would be difficult to do now if we were to say, you know, issue $5 or $10 million in debt for capital improvements.
So, the $300,000 that we pay back for Windsor Road comes out of state motive, or local motor fuel tax or state, I don't know, which one does it come out of? Local?
Yeah, I think it's local motor fuel tax.
So, and it's, so I'm just trying to understand how that, how that works. You say, so it'd be 10 percent of the general revenue for.
Right. So, let's say, as Eric suggested, we all, we all go to non-fossil fuels, and we don't receive any more motor fuel tax revenue because nobody's using fossil fuels. And then, those revenues are no longer available to pay the debt service on those bonds. The fallback is going to be the general fund. So, that's the reason for limiting it to 10 percent of general fund revenues. That will ultimately become a burden on the general fund.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Every year, I wrestle with the library and, and keeping it well-funded, or as we can. You know, this year, we're having to, to take money from the general fund and put it into the, their HVAC system, for example. They are anticipating IT expenses, which, in their budget. Can we do something better? Formalize a VERF policy, you know, include some aspects of the library, you know, given the definitions of a cap, of what a capital improvement is? Go ahead and put in some explicit things in VERF for the library. I know, I know at one time, we had, we had the computerization, you know, their, their, book, the, I should know the exact term, the, you know, the computerization, the library loaning system. That, that system is, you know, that has to be paid for every so often. Building needs to be built and stuff like that, and we don't even have a building fund for ourselves, which, to me, is something that we're not even addressing here, that we need to be. So, I guess that's the general thing here that's missing here, is a building fund for all of us, and, and including some aspects of the library in VERF.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think when we're able to do that, that's definitely something we want to look at. We'd probably have to think and talk with the library folks about whether they want us to do that in our budget, or they want us to give them the funding to do that in their budget. That's a significant difference in my mind.
Can you explain to me the significant difference?
Well, so, the library board ultimately controls the library budget, whereas the city council controls the city's budget. It also, I think, from the standpoint of financial reporting, would be a little bit odd to say have library improvements in our capital improvement fund to be an expense in our budget, but not be reflected in their financial reporting as an expense.
But generally, I guess, then, you're saying these are significant from an accounting perspective, because the money is what it is?
Well, from an accounting perspective and in terms of who has control ultimately over the decision to spend the money.
Okay, but I guess if we all get together and say, these expenses are worth incurring, then we work out the accounting for it.
Right.
Okay. Well, I for one will just kind of throw out there that we, and maybe I'm missing something here, but we are carrying a six-plus, $9 million reserve at this point, correct? I'm probably not using the right term. What am I missing? Fund balance. Many of these things, many of these pressures at the library are one-time expenses. Well, that may, may not be totally accurate. They're expenses that are incurred now and should not be incurred again for another 20, 30 years. All right? The things that Bill Gray is pointing out through Public Works, roofing needs, HVAC needs, and these type of things are multi, they are, they are expenses that are incurred one time, but they have a multi-year benefit. They're not incurred again for another 10, 20, maybe 30 years. So, I think we ought to seriously consider not necessarily raising the tax levy for the library to cover these expenses, but I think we ought to seriously consider reducing the fund balance of the city. I, I think it's worth having the conversation. Maybe that's a silly thing, but let me tell you. Owning a business, owning multiple businesses across central Illinois, these are the kind of things I have to consider on a regular basis. And if I don't have to borrow money, but if I have squirreled away money, which I do in reserve for a new air conditioner, for a new roof, I don't go and borrow that money if I have it in the bank. I also understand that we don't want to necessarily draw down that reserve to a point that we imperil the city. If there is, well, I don't want to say a downturn in the economy. I guess I want to say a worse downturn in the economy. But I think we're, we are, we are not doing the taxpayers of Urbana a service by considering an increase in the levy when we're sitting on six-plus million dollars in fund reserve that we could, that we could actually tap into for a few tens of thousands or even hundreds of thousands to make these one-time purchases. So, maybe I'm missing something here, and I'd love to be enlightened.
Just, just for clarification, there are two, two big issues about which we have significant uncertainty. One is the outcome of Carl's appeal to the state Supreme Court about the appellate court decision on property taxes. If that doesn't go in our favor, there's a potential that we could, that we could, we don't think it's likely, but we could have to repay a large amount of money for property taxes that we received. Also, there's the issue, just the fact that we don't have a state budget, and I think some revenue reductions could still be on the table.
So, let's say the Carl lawsuit goes against the city of Urbana. What's our liability?
I'm going to say $5 million ballpark.
And that comes out of that fund balance? There's no escrowed money whatsoever?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
We did do capital improvements in the budget. We said that in the overall presentation, that we're deciding on things that are going to save us money over the long run, that we can't just let a roof deteriorate. So, there has been consideration of that, what you're pointing out we should do, we are actually doing in this budget.
Eric?
How common is it to have this sort of budgetary interdependence between a library and a city, as opposed to the library having a completely independent budget and revenue stream?
I think, except for library districts, which would be a separate taxing district, it's very common. It's in, in Champaign, the city levies taxes for the library and determines what that tax levy is going to be.
Anybody else? All right, thank you.
I have one, just.
Nope.
No, just kidding. Never mind.
Or not.
Heckle the cherubim.
The ever-exciting Boneyard Creek Community Day Report.
There's a, there's a good introduction for you, Brad.
Thank you, and I'd actually like to start out by thanking and recognizing two of my staff, Beth Ranky, who's a civil engineering tech two, and Justin Swinford, who's a civil engineer two. They were responsible for organizing, planning, and then being there the day of event, direct the volunteers, so many thanks for their efforts on the project. But we had the annual Boneyard Creek Community Day, Saturday, April 23rd. Overall, between the two cities and university, there were 500 volunteers that came out to help clean up the, the community. In Urbana, we had two sites. We had one at our new Boneyard Creek Park, as well as the park district-sponsored one at the Anita Purvis Nature Center. We had 52 volunteers at our site. Some of the activities that the volunteers did was picking up trash both along the stream corridor and in targeted areas of Urbana where we had to trash issue, for example, like Savannah Green Area, also over on Philo Road by the billboards. So, we, some select areas, they were able to collect 13 cubic yards of trash, which is, is quite a bit of trash. We also did some storm drain installations, as well as cleaning quite a bit of garbage out of the creek, so. And Urbana had contributed both staff time, the trash pickup kits, and the T-shirts for the volunteers for the event, so. So I started with a thank you, and I'd like to end with a thank you to our council for supporting the efforts. It is funded out of our stormwater utility fee, we have $5,000 budget every year for public education, participation events. Obviously, we didn't use the full 5,000 on this event, but this event is one of the type of things that, that's intended to fund. So with that, I'll answer any questions, if anyone has any questions about the event.
Doesn't appear so, very comprehensive. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, IDOT Task Force Report.
As many of you know, my name is Alex Batista, and I'm the Human Relations Officer for the City of Urbana. During our last meeting, you asked for a little bit of an update on perhaps where we were, and I wanted to provide you with a little bit of context. The first thing I wanted to remind everyone is that in November of 2015, the Urbana Traffic Stop Data Task Force completed its work and submitted its final report to the city council for review and consideration. In December of '07, the city council heard a presentation from the Chair of the Urbana Traffic Stop Data Task Force on the final report. And then in December 14th, the city council passed a resolution accepting the final report and committing to study the report. In January 25th, the city council received a report of the City of Urbana cannabis arrest data from 2015, 10 to 2015. And then about two months later, on March 14th, the city council received a spreadsheet to assist in the review and prioritization of recommendations. On March 18th, Chief Connolly provided some commentary on some of the recommendations presented in the final task force report. About a month later, on April 22nd, the city council received a, a report of the survey results of the council survey on reviewing and prioritizing recommendations. Shortly thereafter, on May 5th, the city council amended Urbana City Code, reducing the fine for ordinance violations related to cannabis from $300 to $50. About a few weeks later, on May 16th, the city council again amended the City Code, Section 117, settlement of violations prior to suit being filed. And the time for settling of violations was increased from 14 days to 60 days. On the same day, the city council amended Urbana City Code, Section 1567 and 1-18, for possession of cannabis paraphernalia, paraphernalia and penalty. The fine for cannabis paraphernalia possession was reduced from $300 to $25. And on the same day, on May 16th, the city council considered a review of the Urbana municipal fine schedule. So I'd like to say that in the short period between the tendering of the report, the city council has done quite a bit to address some of the most controversial recommendations of the task force report. What remains are some of the more procedural areas of the report, and I wanted to comment briefly on that, and perhaps take some questions. Before I do that, I want to call attention to some recent improvements that have occurred. One of the things that the Human Relations Office has done is created a, a short URL, so people can now get to the Human Relations Office website by just clicking urbanaillinois.ushro. And so I'll show you, you just punch it in. And what you're going to see is a series of new websites that have been designed and went live about four weeks ago. And there's now a landing page where you'll see all things related to community relations, human rights, civil rights, and you'll see that the Human Relations Commission now has its very own webpage. When you go there, and this will be relevant to the task force report in a few moments. Our website's a little slow sometimes. When you go to the Human Relations website, you'll, the citizenry will now have a great idea of how historic the commission is, and some of the work it engages in, which is fundamentally to secure an end in the city to unlawful discrimination of any kind, with this specific, with this specific focus on housing, employment, credit, and access to public accommodations. When you go there, you'll also see really quickly how to file a complaint, how to respond to a complaint if you're an employer, and how to contact the Human Relations Commission should you have any kind of concern. Also, the Civilian Police Review Board now has its very own full functioning webpage. This, this also went live on, I think, May 5. And so when you come here, you'll find a little, find out more about the Civilian Police Review Board, how to file a complaint, one shops, one-stop shopping, like how, what the complaint review process looks like, and then how to contact the Civilian Police Review Board. And when you get to the contact screen, this will be built up further, tells you the hours and the location. Recently, and then finally, the Human Relations Office, what the major activities of the office are, and how it works with other organs of city government. I bring this to your attention because one of the things that has happened recently is name badges have been created for the commissioners, both on the Civilian Police Review Board and the Human Relations Commission, and they're going to begin a process of extensive outreach into the community. I'm a little tired, because I've been doing a lot of outreach myself, on behalf of all three of those organizations, the Human Relations Commission, the Civilian Police Review Board, and the Human Relations Office itself. Soon, the members will be also getting out a little more often. Another thing that has happened is the brochures are slowly being updated, and we're going to keep a nice stock and distribute them throughout the central locations in the City of Urbana. Some of these initiatives go to some of the recommendations that were highlighted in Section 4 of the report, which deals with outreach, making complaint procedures accessible to the public. Another thing that we're proud of in the Human Relations Office is that cards have been prepared for the commission and for the Civilian Police Review Board, that has the number for the, the telephone number, and on the back, a QRC code, so that you can scan it with a phone and go right to the information you need, as well as information about how to file a complaint. So those are some of the things that, that already have happened, and when you do review the fourth section of the report, you'll see that we're already underway to address the outreach and to facilitate complaint resolution processes whenever people feel that they're, have been mistreated, or that there are disparities in terms of enforcement. I'd also like to call attention, when I reviewed the, the report, one of the things I said I would do is review and perhaps comment on some ideas that would be helpful. And I'd like, this is more a beginning conversation, and I'd like to get your feedback on if I'm going in the right direction, so that I can do more work in that direction, and if I need to course correct or scale back a little bit, what that might look like. So for example, the first section of the report had a lot to do, do with the collection of traffic stop data, and I wanted to make the recommendation that the police department, the Human Relations Office, and the IT department meet and establish an initial quarterly traffic stop data report to be presented to the CPRB and the HRC and the city council. As the police chief mentioned earlier, they are going to have a statistician onboard, hopefully by the end of July, and it would be nice for us to begin some of that work, so that when the statistician arrives, we have something to turn over, and we're already a little further on in the process. So one thing we could do is in 90 days, or at least by, shortly after that person comes onboard, have already, already some kind of a, a reporting process and, and a format for the reports. One of the things we noticed early on when we were having conversations here, we were had, all kinds of reports were being generated, Mike generated a couple, Mr. Brown generated a couple, I generated a couple, I try to use best practices in the ones that I generated, as well as, as Mike and Mr. Brown. I think Diane produced a couple, the police department produced a couple, and then the task force itself produced a couple. And so one of the things that an email was circulated, that it'd be nice if there was some kind of standardization, and if we could consistently compare apples to oranges. And so one of my hopes is that we would be able to get together, the UPD, HRO, and IT, and begin sort of standardizing, what are the, going to be the common reports that you get. Similar to finance, you, you've grown accustomed to some of the reporting that happens there. I would not want, it would be a, something that would be subject to improvement once the statistician came onboard, but we already have, I think, sufficient talent to come up with at least a, an initial model. The next comment I wanted to make is, with respect to training and workshops on implicit bias, I wanted to respectfully recommend that the, the police department and the HRO continue to collaborate to establish a strategic training program to address implicit bias. The program would obtain feedback and report results, program feedback and results could be presented to the CPRB and the city council. Pat invited me just recently to do a presentation to the police department, and I did two workshops over the course of a week, and as a result of both of those, I was able to do some training on implicit bias. The force has already received some training over the, the years, and so one of the things I tried to look at is, what could I bring that was different, and could set us, set us up for a more robust conversation over the next two years? And so we, we did the training, it was, it was successful, and one of the things I focused on was helping the police officers first understand that the city council and the community is concerned about their safety, and is concerned about overall effective partnering enforcement of law. And so one of the things I, I slowly worked with them to understand is that implicit bias is not a moral issue, that implicit bias is not this baton that the police department is hit on the head with, and implicit bias is not this little game of trying to figure out who the racist is and who the racist is not, and/or trying to expose areas where a person might or might not be a racist. On the contrary, implicit bias is helping a group of individuals, whether they be policymakers, school districts, or law enforcement, better understand that we have these biases, and they operate, of course, outside of our conscious field, and there are ways to begin, become aware of what some of those might be. And usually, it's not just self-reflection, there are a host of, of techniques that can be used to help. And so I was very pleased that towards the end, several officers came up and, and expressed appreciation for the training, because it was just that, it was neutral. And one example I gave was that in terrorist environments, individuals receive specialized training on biases. There are places that bad actors, quote unquote, will put devices where a person will not think to search, because we have a bias, clearly, that, that item could not be in that place. There was a time when narcotics were placed inside of body cavities of individuals, we thought that that would not be a place, that those things would exist. And then slowly, over time, law enforcement became more conscious of the entire field of places that drugs could be hidden, or, or other items. And so part of implicit bias is just expanding that cognitive discipline and focus to understand that there are places where bias can step in and harm our law enforcement practice. And so I was very pleased with that. It was just an hour training, and again, it was just focused on resetting the temperature, and beginning to have this training really be thoughtful, engaging, and exciting about an officer and a, and a law enforcement group, beginning to, to search for where those biases might be, as opposed to it being, you know, lorded over them. So one thing that might cost some money, and we might come back and ask you for some money. I do not envision doing the training myself, I envision being a partner, I envision collaborating with the police department and identifying the talent. We have state boards, we have the PTI, Police Training Academy here, we have other experts that we can reach out to, but if we're able to get together and begin the process of developing a strategic plan over the next year, year and a half. And one of the things that'll be neat about that is that as we, our statistician comes onboard and we start to identify areas where we might not be as effective as possible in, in enforcement, then we can secure training that impacts that particular gap. The other area that I wanted to recommend is in Area 1.3, which was an ongoing evaluation and reevaluation of the efficacy of traffic stops, and the development of a strategic approach. And from the prior report I gave you, your own commentary is there, I wanted just to add to the dialogue that it would be good for the Urbana Police Department and the HRO to collaborate to establish an outcome analysis model for the ongoing review and reporting of traffic stop data. And when I say that, I also, of course, mean the statistician coming onboard. And we had a brief exchange about this a while ago, when I mentioned that, as we're looking at the data, we'll begin to identify what's working and what's not working, and I think I used the analogy, the metaphor of a play. If a play's not working, then we need to regroup and identify what another one might be. A lot of organizations use quality assurance departments and quality control departments for those types of efforts, and so bringing on that kind of mindset would be very helpful. When it comes to Section 2, which involves the statistics recommendations, in Section 2.1, there was a key recommendation to hire and list the statistician, and as you can, as you've heard, that is on its way, and hopefully, one will be hired in late July. The only thing I would add there is that the statistics should be reviewed by at least three units or agencies, the city council, the Human Relations Commission, and the CPRB. I don't include myself there, only because I am, I serve those, all three of those bodies, and so I will inevitably be a part of that review. With respect to Section 2.2, that the data collected by the police department should be made available to the public to the greatest extent possible, my comment on that is simply that a solution is already in place to some extent, in terms of the open data portal. What I would recommend beyond that is the creating of a, of a specific page on the newly-created civilian police review page, that will assist in greater transparency and access to the various data sets that are going to be created by the HRO office and the statistician that's hired by the police department. One of the things that I've noticed about the City of Urbana, the mayor and the council is that it is very, it's always earnestly concerned about transparency of government, so that recommendation is probably going to be the easiest. With respect to Section 2.3, the city council or an appointed commission should review statistical data regarding traffic stops by annually or annually, and publicly report on whether progress in reducing the traffic stops, in reducing traffic stop racial disparities is occurring. I mentioned this earlier in terms of beginning to work on a quarterly report, and hopefully having one, a model ready for you in the next 90 days, but supplementing that with the data being reviewed by the civilian police review and the HRC. And this is the place where I really want feedback. You, this council is very busy, this council, as I sat today, I heard all of these budget presentations and improvements, and zoning, and gaming. And so we have two bodies that you have created, that some very amazing people sit on, very intelligent people, and I've had discussions with both bodies, and with the individual commissioners or board members of each, and they are prepared to begin to do significant partnership around this issue, and do some of the heavy lifting for you. You are not replaceable, but we could be in a position where they're doing a lot of that heavy lifting procedural work and reporting back to you on what progress looks like. They're a very motivated group, and they're very skilled already. There'll be some new skill that I'd look to get training for them, but I was hoping that you would permit me to come back, after consulting with the police chief, on what some scopes of responsibility could be for both of those bodies. scopes of responsibility could be for both of those bodies as they begin to do the day-to-day around this issue. With respect to, and I'm almost done, with respect to Section 2.4 of the recommendations, that statistical evidence should be gathered on how often traffic stops lead to arrests. The arrests should be classified according to traffic crimes, warrant arrests, drug crimes, and property crimes. I would only add that the same as I commented a few moments ago, namely, that the data be reviewed by all three bodies: the City Council, the Human Relations Commission, and the Civilian Police Review Board. With respect to Section 3, which all deal with policy and procedure recommendations, namely 3.1, that the City Council and the Police Department should undertake a review of municipal government policies regarding ticketing to be sure that all citizens, regardless of race or ethnicity, be ticketed at nearly the same rates. Again, the same recommendation that I made before, that these two bodies be allowed to do the heavy lifting for you and work with the Police Department to move some of these initiatives forward. During the last meeting of the Human Relations Commission, Commissioner Peter Resnick, who was the chair of the task force, expressed some concern over the council's perception of 3.1 in the survey results. And the concern, and I'm going to paraphrase it, I hope I get it correctly, that he had is that Section 3.1 is the recommendation that had the most misunderstanding by the News Gazette and by others. I think there was some example about that we don't want a situation where officers have already ticketed a certain amount of one race and now need to stop and focus on another race, and now, and Section 3.1 has nothing to do with that. Section 3.1 is basically, this is my terminology, asking that the city have a rigorous process of ongoing analysis of where does disparity occur in all kinds of enforcement, and where it's found, what can be done to correct it, if it's a disparity, and not the situation where law enforcement doesn't have the discretion to do its job. With respect to Section 3.3, the City Council should examine its fine schedule for traffic violations and attempt to adjust it so that fines do not disproportionately impact low-income drivers. Very happy to report that Mr. Charlie Smythe already brought that issue up at the last meeting of the council, and there's going to be some discussion about how to move forward with analyzing the different fines that exist in the fine schedule. With respect to Section 3.3, the City Council should investigate programs that will allow low-income drivers to obtain auto insurance at an affordable rate. This is an area that's difficult and complicated, it showed up in your own survey results, and what I would recommend is, one of the things that the Human Relations Commission is going to be doing from here on out is engaging in rigorous study, similar to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, where it analyzes problems and presents solutions and ideas for this body to consider in terms of policy. And so, I would recommend that you ask the Human Relations Commission to reach out and study what kinds of programs could be developed, what kinds of solutions may be available for providing improved access to auto insurance for low-income drivers. With respect to Section 3.4, the City Council should consider a policy of directing a moratorium on issuing of citations for cannabis possession when it is discovered in the course of traffic This may be an area that could use further study by either the Human Relations Commission or the Civilian Police Review Board. The city did not provide for a moratorium, but it did provide for a reduction in the fine for cannabis. It preserved discretion of the Police Department, which is important. However, moving forward, it would be important for an ongoing assessment of cannabis charge and practices within the City of Urbana, and that could just be a study. And again, if anomalies are found, they're researched and reported back to the council, and that's sort of where I would see a direction moving forward. I have not commented on any of the recommendations contained in Section 4 because all of those recommendations involve reaching out to the community and either providing education or establishing agreement on, excuse me. I'm not used to talking so much. I have not commented on Section 4.0, the entire 4 series. I think that's the last thing we do. It's important when we reach out to the community and we begin to promise things, or we begin to educate on how things will go, that we have an idea of where are the areas we wish to improve. And so, we can very quickly develop stop cards, training on how to behave during a traffic stop, get appointments with the school system, identify community leaders, reach out to youth, which seems to be the biggest area of concern. There's a lot of parents and minority youth that are in ongoing fear that a law enforcement officer to them represents danger. Those kinds of things can be corrected once we have a consensus of what we want to talk about. And so, I feel very comfortable, once we have a clear direction, getting all that scheduled. We can do it within the course of a year. It should be a sustained approach, but again, at least that's my greatest comfort level. And part of building the outreach effort of the HRO office and the Human Relations Commission and the Civilian Police Review Board is building the infrastructure to take us there. Again, as I've always said, nothing can be done without the Police Department's collaboration and cooperation, and I'm very pleased that Pat and I are developing a very good relationship. We're partnering extensively. It's the beginning. This report has not been with us that long, but we're already on to some significant progress, and I was wondering if you had any questions and if you had any feedback for me in terms of how I identify what I or the two units that I staff can do.
Well, thanks very much, Alex, for a really detailed and concise report about progress as you see it. Very valuable for the council to hear that. I really think that you are indeed on, I think, a good path. I think I support the direction that you're taking. The fact that the new websites assist the community in a very direct way to focus attention and information in a place where it's accessible is very significant. One almost kind of wonders like how we didn't have this before. Where would this have been most helpful in the past, but we have this facility today? There are other departments I could see taking that advantage too and adding additional informational pages to our website. The interaction of the Human Relations Commission and the traffic stop study and yourself has been really strong. I don't see, there's a lot of work to do, and it sounds like there's a lot of thinking and planning in the next year, and so, but apparently, I have to trust that those people who are involved already in the commission level are up to and interested in making that progress, so I think we should let them proceed. The council can't micromanage so many details, and that's why we have these subcommittees. So, I think things look pretty good from my point of view. Thank you.
Eric?
Could I just respond briefly?
Oh, sure, please.
Thank you very much. I do want to say something. I don't want to engage in a debate, so I'm trying to figure out how to say this. My belief is that every President of the United States has done an important, has contributed an important contribution to the nation's life and future. I believe that the City of Urbana is positioned for some outstanding success and growth. Some of the work that I'm seeing being done in the library, in the Finance Department, in the IT Department, in the Public Works Department, arts, I'm seeing, and please excuse me if I forget any, I'm seeing some amazing things happening. You have new people on board that are adding cross-pollinization of knowledge and experience from other organizations, and nothing that I am doing could not have happened without the contributions of my predecessors. One of the things that I'm going to be doing is creating the history of the Human Relations Office, and I think I'm either the fourth, the fifth, or maybe the sixth HRO. And so, nothing I've accomplished could have been done, or am accomplishing, without the work of Todd Rent, my predecessor, Vassilia Clark, his predecessor, and I think there were three predecessors before Vassilia. And so, I completely thank you. I'm doing everything I can, but I'm also benefiting from some tremendous contributions. And also, apart from the Human Relations Office, my colleagues in Mayor Pressing's administration, so I'm very, very thankful for that.
A thought just came to me when you mentioned relatively briefly a program of low-cost auto insurance for low-income folks. I wonder, and maybe you've already thought about this, I wonder if it might be feasible to tie the city's purchase of liability insurance to a requirement or some kind of requirement that the insurer could also provide low-cost auto insurance for low-income people who are resident in the city. In effect, it would mean probably we'd pay somewhat higher premiums, so we would be, you know, the rest of the city would be subsidizing that to some extent, but on the other hand, that would be such a large volume of business for the insurer that might even out their risks enough that it really wouldn't cost them that much.
That would, may I? Just, sure. When we do have a hearing, I anticipate involving some very smart people to come testify and give us ideas, and I'll definitely have that as one of them.
Charlie?
Yeah, well, building on that, you mentioned fines, but the fines that we control are pretty trivial compared to what are affecting people in traffic stops, which are the fines set by the state. We don't have a lot of control in that, but what we do have control over is education, figuring out ways of making insurance available, since a lot of these big tickets are, you know, driving without a license and driving without insurance. Those are two of the big ones that I think show up in the report. And if that's the case, then programs that address those two particular issues are probably really important. You know, finding insurance, getting people educated, getting people their license back or whatever, and keeping, you know, keeping them, keeping them aware that they need to be safe and practice safe driving so that they don't lose their license and they don't lose their insurance. You know, we want people to be able to drive to work and stuff like that, so losing your licenses really can be very costly from that perspective. So, that is, you know, we can't, unless we can get the state to change its fines in some fashion, we need to figure out a way to counterbalance that. So, if I'm trying to follow my notes here, so, the Human Relations Commission looks into that and into dealing with that, that'd be great. Developing a scope of responsibility for some of these other commissions would be very helpful. I agree there. I look forward to seeing how your outcome analysis model works with, and that's a long-term project with a new staff member. Something you mentioned earlier, implicit bias and stuff like that, you talked about training, training some of the commissioners and stuff. I have to wonder if we wouldn't, as City Council members, benefit from some of that training as well, implicit bias in particular. I know there's a website on implicit bias that's pretty good and showed me a lot, but I'm sure that's just the tip of the iceberg. So, some of those, if there's an educational opportunity for us as council members, I would probably welcome that.
Anyone else? Bill?
I know it's getting late, but I had to mention that probably one of the things that we do as a city already with our Complete Streets policy is to try to build a community that's livable and walkable and bikeable and try to have affordable housing near work so that you don't need a driver's license if you can't currently afford one, you need to save some money for a car, save up some money for insurance. And so, I think that's something that sometimes we overlook when we're talking about our streets policies and making that kind of livable community, is that it does have a broader effect, and we need to be able, we need to still concentrate on that and see that that does affect things like the traffic stops and the potential that people run into with problems and stuff.
May I make one final remark?
Sure.
Yes, and even our MTD, I mean, in our community, we benefit from many options for transportation other than vehicles, and so, beginning that educational campaign and changing of mindset would be very helpful. And the final thing I wanted to mention is, I'm deeply indebted to the Clerk's Office and also CD I wanted to include in that list of departments that I'm very pleased to work with.
Okay, so, we are down to consolidated social service funding allocation.
Matt Regic sent an email out today with an updated matrix and the final amounts for the budget, and this is just a reminder that we're hoping to, the council is busy with this, and that we're able to vote on the allocations on June 6. Any questions or anybody need anything from staff?
A couple of people have asked me individually, and I am willing to, you know, coordinate and collect and do the averaging and rounding and such like that. And, let's see, so Monday, the 6th of June is two weeks, so I think that, I think if I get everything before, I can do all the stuff if I have the raw material on the weekend prior to the 6th, although, except that won't get noticed. Okay, let's, I think I should have everything in a week so that I can spend a couple of days doing all the averaging and rounding and send that to everybody at the same time that you get your packets, so that you'll see what the numbers are.
Yeah, I think packet deadline would be good, which would be the, Thursday morning's a packet deadline, but we would probably need it that Wednesday, so.
Okay, so.
And then it would be in the packet and would be available.
So, if I get everything one week from now, I can take a day or two to, or earlier would be great, but at least by a week from now, then, and so, a week from now, I can, when we will all assemble, I can scold anybody who didn't get their materials to me.
It's Memorial Day.
That's Memorial Day. So, we'll meet on the Tuesday?
No, it's the 5th Monday, so we don't meet until June 6.
Ah, so we're not even going to meet at all?
Yeah.
Okay, get it to me in a week, or I'll be after you. Get it to me in a week, or I'll be after you.
So, that heads up because it is the 5th Monday, but that gives lots of extra time to work on it, right?
Right.
Okay, any other questions, Libby? All right, thank you. Okay, now that you all sat through that, we'll get to agenda item number seven. Resolution number 2016-05-030R, resolution asserting prevailing wages. Finance Department.
I'll make this simple. This is really just a housekeeping item. We're required by state law to do, to adopt this every year in June. And so, it's on this committee meeting for adoption at the first meeting in June. The only thing that's a little unusual about this is that the attachment is actually prevailing wages from July 2015. Normally, it would be more current, however, the State Department of Labor has stopped updating prevailing wage rates. I know they're working on an update, but I don't know that we'd have it in time to adopt in June. So, I called them, and they advised me to use the most recent prevailing wage rates for Champaign County, which I did.
Dennis?
Great work, and I make a motion that we accept that direction and pass Resolution 2016-05-030R, which has to do with the prevailing wages as based on the most current wage report from the state, forward to the City Council with approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Resolution number 2016-05-031R, resolution approving Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System annual budget, Public Works.
I'll try to keep this one short and sweet, but at the landfill, we have an agreement that was signed back 30 years ago. And as part of that agreement, the City Council has to approve the annual budget for the CUSWORs, which stands for Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System, basically the landfill budget. So, what you've got before you tonight is what the proposed budget for fiscal year 1617 is. It's the same budget that we had for 1516 with a total of expenses of $46,987. The revenues are balanced to match what the expenses are. It breaks down, there's about $10,487 in administrative costs. That actually goes to reimburse the city of Urbana for our staff's time and the resources we use in managing the affairs of the closed landfill out there. And then, there's about $36,500 that goes for monitoring and maintenance activities out at the old abandoned landfill site. It's out by the Landscape Recycling Center. So, with that, I will end on a good piece of news, is that we have completed another year of monitoring out there, and there is no contamination of any of the surrounding properties or groundwater that has been observed to date. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Seeing no questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Charlie, seconded by Eric. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
The good news is that we only have two more years to officially be proactively watching the landfill for leaking.
Yeah.
It expires, right? The agreement expires in 2018?
That is correct. It expires in 2018, though we've had some preliminary discussions in advance of the agreement expiring, and there is an interest from the city of Champaign, as well as the University of Illinois, to continue on with the monitoring activities out there. So, there might be the possibility of an intergovernmental agreement to extend our monitoring and maintenance activities out there and cost share with those entities.
All right, which we'll talk about another day. Thank you. Moving right along. Resolution number 2016-05-032R, resolution approving capital improvement plan, Public Works.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to make the presentation on the, oops, that's not the right one. Excuse me. Somehow, my presentation vanished. Go to the backup.
Welcome to China.
There we go. So, we'll go through the 2016 Capital Improvement Plan. I'll remind you that at the May 9 meeting, Craig Schonkweiler was present, and he gave a presentation on the street portion of it. So, we're going to kind of break it down into a couple of sections. First, we're going to talk about projects that we've recently completed. We'll run through what projects that are currently underway. We'll talk a little bit about the capital improvement plan in general. We'll go over some future projects, and we'll end touching on some unfunded projects that we have. So, recently completed projects. So, we've been doing our storm and sanitary sewer repairs. The sanitary repairs are paid out of the sewer benefit tax fee that we collect. The storm sewer repairs are paid out of the stormwater utility fee. And these are for point repairs, so when you see them removing pavement out in the street and digging down and fixing the pipe, that's what that pays for. We had a total of $400,000 budgeted for sanitary repairs and replacement, and that includes the sewer line that you're going to see in a minute, as well as $340,000 budgeted for storm sewer-related items. Moving to the next one is the sanitary and storm sewer lining. So, this is where we actually can insert a new pipe inside the existing pipe without having to dig anything up in the street. So, this is our preferred way to rehab sewer pipes in the city. We do about a mile of sanitary sewer lining a year. So, that's a project we just completed, in fact, this past week. So, we try to do this project every year because it does help us replace quite a bit of our aging sanitary and storm sewer system pipe. We had a storm sewer cleaning and televising project. That was $142,000. The contractor that did it this year was National Power Rotting Corporation of the Chicago area. They actually clean and televise the sewers, looking for problems. We've been starting up in northwest Urbana and working our way southeast. So, our plan is to go through the entire city sewer system, cleaning that. Point out that expense is funded by the stormwater utility fee. So, another project that was finished was sidewalk inventory and assessment. And this was a $250,000 IDOT grant. Now, it was not just for the city of Urbana. It also covered Champaign and Savoy. The Regional Planning Commission led this effort, so they actually went out, as you can see from some of the pictures in the slide, they actually went out and took measurements on all the sidewalks to determine their compliance with the current ADA standards and to look at the condition of the sidewalks. And then, they were able to do some analysis with that and also be able to give us all the data in a GIS format. So, that's something that we never had before, was a GIS layer or data set that had all our sidewalk information and, including pictures of every sidewalk ramp that there is. So, this will be a really useful tool moving forward. It'll help us go away from just a complaint-driven repair system to actually looking at fixing the, you know, the worst sidewalk, whether it's ADA compliance or structural condition. So, we're very thankful to IDOT for funding that effort. We replaced some sidewalk on Lincoln Avenue between Springfield and Green Street. This was the 901 Western Avenue, the new student housing complex that went in there. As part of their project, they were removing some of the panels of sidewalk along there where there were existing driveways from the buildings that were eliminated for the new apartment complex. The city funded the remaining portions so that we could have an entirely new section of sidewalk that met current ADA requirements. The old sidewalk was in bad condition and didn't meet the current ADA standards. Moving on to current projects. And Mike Madigan alluded to this earlier. This is our North Cunningham Avenue sidewalk project, which they've got the majority of the work completed between Country Club Road and Kenyon. They have a little bit of grading and seating left, but all the sidewalk is in place. What they'll be starting on, actually, as of tomorrow, are the curb cut closures kind of between University all the way up to Cunningham-Kenyon. So, they'll be actually removing some unused driveways and putting the curb in to make them safer and actually restoring the parkway where the old driveways were. We're going to use some stormwater utility fund monies to fix a problem over at the Fairway Estates Detention Basin. This is off of Florida Avenue. There's a large city storm sewer, which would kind of be at the far end. If you kind of look back into the picture, you can see there's a big 60-inch diameter city storm sewer that discharged into this privately-owned detention basin that was creating erosion issues. So, we're actually going to go in and kind of rebuild the bottom of this detention basin and put some concrete armoring in to prevent it from having future erosion problems. We're looking on sanitary sewers, extending a sanitary sewer to replace some privately-owned sanitary sewers on Springfield, just east of McCullough. This is an $80,000 effort that's going to be funded by the sewer benefit tax. Others developer looking at putting in several new apartment complexes along that north side of Springfield Avenue. So, rather than having it served by undersized privately-owned sewer that's in poor condition, we're going to put in a nice new city-owned public sewer that they'll be able to connect to and should be able to serve the larger sewer loads that will be coming to it. What we're going to do, we're doing some repairs on the Lincoln and Goodwin Avenue bridges. What you're seeing there is a picture of the sidewalk and curb. It's been patched with our Dura Patcher. It's in pretty bad shape. The reason we're contracting this project out is the sidewalk and curb are actually integral parts of the bridge. They weren't poured separately, so it's actually a structural repair on the bridge rather than the standard sidewalk work. So, the cost of those repairs is about $26,000. That's funded by stormwater utility fee. The contractor should actually be starting work on that, on those repairs, early part of June. So, that covers our completed projects for the last year, as well as our current projects. Moving next into the capital improvement plan, just a couple of background items. It was a planning document for infrastructure. This is kind of our five-year spending plan for infrastructure. The effort started back in the 1980s. They actually did several years of information gathering to prepare the initial one, and that was adopted back in 1988. There was an ordinance that adopted it. And currently, we cover a five-year planning period, so the current plan goes through fiscal year 2021. At times, we used to do a 10-year planning period, but we found that that was actually too far out, that it was hard to be able to project and estimate what type of projects and what type of funding levels we would have. So, some of the budgets that are covered in this capital improvement plan, there's the sanitary sewer benefit tax is covered in that, the stormwater utility fund, the state motor fuel tax fund, which Craig covered back on May 9, the local motor fuel tax fund, which also was covered on May 9, and the capital improvement, replacement and improvement fund, which was, once again, covered on May 9 by Craig. Some of the other projects that are included in the capital improvement plan, but the budgets aren't included, those are parts of separate divisions or departments, are the tax increment financing districts, so we show what major infrastructure projects are being financed by the tax increment financing districts. There's some community development block grant funds that we show for capital improvement programs. And finally, there's some revenues from the motor vehicle parking system funding that we use for certain capital projects related to that system. So, going through the sanitary sewer utility fund really quickly, that's funded by the sewer benefit tax. It pays for operation and maintenance activities, the rehab and replacement projects that we talked about under the previously completed projects. It also covers a number of initiatives that council has adopted to help out residents with the expenses associated with sanitary sewer repairs of their laterals. So, we have the sewer lateral pavement reimbursement, the overhead sewer program, and private to public sewer conversion programs. We're also currently reserving a portion of the revenues from the sanitary sewer benefit tax to fund future interceptor projects. So, you notice in the report, there's a East Urbana interceptor project that would open up a large development area east of High Cross Road, going all the way south down to Curtis. So, we're currently putting away $100,000 a year in savings to be able to, you know, pay for that project in the future, or at least pay for a portion of it and reduce our debt service at the time that project went. The stormwater utility fund, that's funded by the stormwater utility fee. Once again, it funds operation-maintenance activities, the rehab replacement programs. It also funds our stormwater compliance program, our MS4 program. We have a state form a permit. There's 43 items that we have to do every year to keep the state from pursuing us for non-compliance. And the stormwater utility fee pays for the administration of those programs. And it also pays for mosquito abatement and some of the bridge costs. So, some of the challenges with the capital improvement plan, and Craig mentioned some of these in his presentation, but, you know, our infrastructure is aging, its condition is deteriorating. We're having to replace more and more of it each year. There's been no increase in motor fuel taxes. It's been pretty flat level funding for that. Rising construction costs, increased regulations. In fact, we just got a new stormwater permit that has additional requirements that we have to adopt over the next five-year period. So, that's something that we're currently evaluating, and we'll have to make adjustments in future budgets to be able to continue to comply with the state regulations concerning that. And then, fiscally constrained, as we do maintain a positive cash flow balance in all these different funds. So, go through some of the future projects that we're looking at doing as part of the capital improvement plan. So, we're looking at doing a major concrete sidewalk reconstruction effort, $100,000 worth of sidewalk repairs. This will be paid out of the capital replacement improvement fund. We're anticipating starting work on this in 2016. We've got some sidewalk ramps that we've had accommodation requests for from disabled individuals that we want to address, as well as just areas where the sidewalk has deteriorated or heaved that it needs to be replaced. So, we're going to tackle that. We're also looking at a brick sidewalk reconstruction project, and that'll be in East Urbana. Once again, $100,000 funded out of the capital replacement improvement fund. What you're seeing in this picture here is, this is actually one of the repairs where some of the bricks have heaved and were causing a tripping hazard. As a temporary safety measure, we've actually removed the bricks and put in crushed red granite as a temporary patch until we can come in and permanently fix the bricks, which we'll be doing this summer. We're looking at a Philo Road sidewalk extension from Washington to Fairlon. This is a heavily-used pedestrian area. You see people walking down that particular corridor all the time. We're looking at $140,000 contributed by the CDGB funds that would be utilized for that. And we're looking at a construction of that phased over the 2018 through 2020 time period. We're also looking at filling in some of the sidewalk gaps on Bucie Avenue from Sunset to Fairview. We're looking at that. It's being a cost of about $77,000. Once again, paid for by CDGB funds. Anticipated construction for that would be 2021. On an exciting note, too, we're looking at a pedestrian master plan for 2016. We've got $45,000 budgeted out of capital replacement improvement funds. We're looking at having the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, the same ones that did the sidewalk inventory, also prepare that plan. And obviously, you know, the BPAC will be heavily involved in that effort. Bill mentioned this earlier, but we have $25,000 budgeted out of TIF 1 for the Broadway Avenue Mini Park project. With that, construction anticipated to occur in 2016. We're looking at the Kinch Street intersection lighting from Washington to Pennsylvania at a cost of $100,000. Once again, that's paid out of the CDGB funds. Anticipated construction for that is 2017. We're looking at LED lighting improvements in the university district, so this would include the streets of Nevada, Oregon, Matthews, Gregory. These are old series lighting. They're a hazard. They're difficult to find parts for. They'd be replaced with new LED lighting. We're looking at a cost of, for at least phase one of it, there'll be multiple phases of that effort of $500,000, and that's paid out of the motor vehicle parking system funds. Anticipate construction on that would be 2017. Anticipate construction on that would be two thousand seventeen. A stormwater-funded project is the Colorado Avenue Storm Sewer Extension. This is a ditch off of Colorado Avenue that goes up next to the Stone Ridge Apartments. We're looking at a hundred and ten thousand dollars funded out of stormwater utility fee to put a storm sewer pipe in to essentially allow us to cover up or fill in the ditch. Um, this is one where we're gonna partner with the landowners, they're gonna contribute a share of the cost, and the city's gonna contribute um, a portion of the cost, so it'll be a collaborative effort. But the ditch has been a maintenance headache uh, for the adjacent properties and has created some flooding issues for them. Um, and then excitingly, in two thousand eighteen, we're looking at a stormwater master plan that'll be funded at a level of two hundred thousand by the stormwater utility fee. And what this'll provide is some long-term guidance as far as major capital improvements for the storm sewer system. Our last one was done in nineteen eighty, so it's a little dated, so we'll be excited to get a, a brand-new plan and look forward to following and implementing that. We're also looking at a sanitary sewer extension to uh, serve Saint Matthews Church. Uh, it's kinda hard to see in this graphic, but um, there is no sanitary sewer immediately adjacent to the church property. They have a lateral that goes and actually crosses Philo Road and runs through a couple of residents' side yard to get access to a city sewer. It's been a problematic issue for them. They've had a lot of issues with the lateral, um, and we're looking at, you know, being able to serve them with a, with a public sewer and hopefully address their sewer issues. And then we have kind of our annual projects. These are projects that we do every year, so our storm sewer cleaning and televising, our sanitary and storm sewer repairs, and our sanitary and storm sewer lining. And then I'll close with just talking a little bit about unfunded projects. Um, and the first one actually is an unfunded project. We mentioned earlier, we are putting uh, you know, funds away to be able to pay for some of the cost of the East Urbana interceptor project. But you can see, it has a total cost of eight million dollars. About four million of that is the city's share. The other four million will be the sanitary district's share. So, you know, obviously, anything that we put away will help pay down what the cost of it is and hopefully reduce our, any debt service that we would have on that. Back in that nineteen eighties stormwater master plan that we had, they had identified some boundary area storm sewer improvements, and these will help with future development as it comes into the city. Um, and uh, you know, that's kind of an unfunded project, so um, that'll have to be addressed in the future. And then the, the final unfunded project that I wanted to mention, and these are in addition to the ones that Craig had previously presented, was the Boneyard Creek Improvements. We've completed segment three. We still have segments one, two, four, and five left. Um, the total cost of the remaining segments, we're estimating at about six million dollars, and as of right now, we do not have a funding source identified for any future um, Boneyard Creek improvement projects. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Okay, it being ten twenty-eight, I'll uh...
Yeah, I, that's what I was gonna address, housekeeping thing. We have to move to stay on for another half hour.
All those in favor of extending the meeting by a half hour, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Nay. It appears the ayes narrowly have it. Any questions for Brad? Bill?
Just a quick one on the um, stormwater master plan. Would that also, so that would be for storm sewers and also would involve hydrology models for surface water as far as capacity of the boneyard and saline and potential detention basins, things like that?
Yes, it will, and in fact, it'll probably involve some water quality aspect of it too, looking at green infrastructure and looking at addressing some of the, the water quality or pollutant loading issues.
Okay, great. Look forward to that.
Dennis? I'm really interested in um, watching the evolution of uh, the upcoming pedestrian master plan. We have a lot of um, crossings in the community which repetitiously become topics of concern. Um, North Lincoln is certainly one of them, and how the bus interacts with the dropping off people to the, you know, the, um, the apartments up there, and then there's, you know, even the future um, significance of how many more people will be living uh, just north of the city building and the two-hundred-block Vine, and how people are gonna be able to cross the street safely there is another question that should come up. And some of these um, problems need um, really fast addressing, probably faster than a master plan is going to be able to achieve um, comprehensively, so I just don't know. Um, but I assume that that's gonna be, you know, one of the focal points of why we're gonna have a pedestrian plan in the first place.
Yeah, I'm sure that's an issue that we'll address. We, I know we're also looking, when we get these new developments that come in, we are looking at what are the pedestrian, you know, and bicycle and mass transit impacts. And in the past, we've, we've always done, I thought, a pretty good job at looking at the traffic impacts, um, but going along with the complete streets policy, we are looking at, you know, what the other impacts are on, like I said, for those other items, and trying to do a, a better job of anticipating issues and making changes in advance of the actual development.
But when we have um, subdivisions that are platted and start, uh, they're being built in um, the farther areas of the city, uh, we often don't have sidewalk plans for those, we don't require sidewalks all the time. It'll be interesting to kinda hear what conversation comes from future discussion.
Yes.
How far do sidewalks go on um, East Washington Avenue before they peter out?
I'd have to check our, our maps. I don't know off the top of my head. Do they stop at Pfeffer? Yeah, I think they stop at Pfeffer. Yeah, they actually might stop over by Smith.
They stop at Smith, because, yeah, they stop at Prairie School, yeah, at Smith, yeah, because there's nothing, that's uh, that's not part of the city that, um, though I don't know if the city maintains that road.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk from Prairie to Pfeffer.
Yeah.
Is, is that on the radar screen as far as extending sidewalk?
Did you wanna address that?
On page thirty-five in your book, if you have it handy, there's a black line on the north side of Washington Street, and it ends at Pfeffer. So there is a sidewalk on the north side. The comment we heard earlier tonight, there is no pedestrian access between Pfeffer and High Cross Road. And actually, at this time, there's no sidewalk on High Cross Road either. There's a shoulder without a sidewalk.
Um, yeah, I'd move, we'd send resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero five dash zero three two R to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Bill, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye and the ayes. Uh, all those opposing aye and the ayes have it. So uh, agenda item number ten, ordinance number twenty sixteen dash zero five dash zero four two, an ordinance authorizing the transfer and assignment of West Country Club Road overflow pipe. Does anyone really need a...
Move to send this to council recognition for approval.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, opposed nay, and the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Great presentation on that, Brad.
I guess, for the benefit of the public, maybe we could summarize it next, next, when it goes to council?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think it's just straightforward in the interest of time and uh, the fact that we've had some uh, some citizens and business owners uh, sitting here for hours, uh, waiting on us, which actually leads me to a little bit of commentary. I think we oughta seriously consider uh, putting these agenda items uh, before staff reports and those type of things uh, in order to accommodate uh, citizens and business owners in the community. So with that, I shall recuse myself from the rest of the meeting and ask some other sucker to take the chair.
I think it falls on...
Charlie raises his hand.
I think it falls on me.
Thank you, sir.
You're recused, lucky you. Next up is ordinance number twenty sixteen five forty-three, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three forty-three, increasing the number of Class G-two liquor licenses for Amshiv Incorporated, doing business as Vegas Place, five oh one South Vine Street.
Mayor?
Okay, you may recall that when we, when the state first passed the law allowing video gambling, um, there were some communities that said they weren't gonna have it at all, and other communities, um, such as City of Champagne, our neighbor, were, they were not gonna set a limit on it. So we came up with a, an alternate plan, which was sort of halfway in between there, that we were gonna set limits on the number, and that's what we've done. And I would point out that before this became legal in the state of Illinois, it's not that there wasn't video gambling going on. There was a lot of video gambling going on, however, it was not being taxed. So there was no revenue to local governments or the state. Um, we have, there's been complaints about why are we selling liquor? Why do we have um, video gambling? We get a half a million dollars a year from liquor licenses, and we're getting about a quarter of a million dollars a year from um, the gambling establishments. None of these establishments have proved to be a problem. Uh, there was concern about if we had this, maybe we're gonna have police problems. Uh, we haven't had any. And the gentleman who is in the next um, ordinance on Washington Street has done us a huge favor by spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to, to buy what was the home run, which was a huge problem for the police department for many years. He's a very good businessman, and we've checked out, you know, all these people that apply for these licenses. Uh, he has um, similar business in another county. I think he knows what he's doing. He wants to have the gambling establishment in one-third of the property that he bought, and the two-thirds of it, he wants to have a restaurant. So that provides, that's gonna provide jobs for people in that neighborhood. Um, so I don't wanna be in a position of saying um, it's a punishment, you know, no, no good deed goes unpunished, because I think that we don't wanna discourage legitimate businesses from the city of Urbana. If we had to eliminate liquor licenses and video gambling, we'd have to cut out seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from our budget. We use this money for good things, and um, all the things that the city does is for the benefit of the people who live here. And I talked with Dennis about if there's a community around um, Washington Street that doesn't want to have um, a G-two license there, that maybe the city could um, have the, we, we get a thousand dollars per terminal. And for those who think that we have too many of these things, I will, I, I think Mike Munson has put together the figures on this. We certainly have uh, far fewer than the city of Champagne in terms of per capita. Um, we're, we're low. We just don't have uh, that many of them, but it's a good revenue source for us. Charleston has um, eighty terminals, and they make um, is it, was it Charleston? They make um, well, maybe it was, it was Mattoon is making fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents per capita. Urbana is making five dollars and ninety-eight cents per capita. Champagne is making seven dollars and fourteen cents per capita. So we effectively have a cap on these, because you have to come for every single license, but we also have a cap in terms of, we've drawn the limits around the city. They have to be, you know, five hundred feet from another G-two, so there's an absolute limit that we would, we haven't gotten to yet, but I will ask the CD department to figure out what that is. But uh, we have not had any bad experience with any of these establishments, and whether, if we don't have an establishment in Urbana, I don't think that that's gonna reduce the amount of gambling. I think all people can do is go to another establishment in Champagne, where right next to a city that doesn't have any limits, and legitimate business people have invested huge amounts of money into remodeling buildings, tearing down buildings, and trying to get uh, a better use of the building. So I think um, that both of these are, are good ideas, and I support them. We've checked it out. People have different opinions. I have, I'm, I don't gamble. I had aunts who lived in New Jersey who would go to Atlantic City, and that was their form of entertainment. Our most profitable establishment is Hot Spot, and that's right next to a large retirement home, and people come and gamble. They are not the customers that would go to the American Legion, they're not the customers that would go in a bar, but they do find this as their entertainment, so I don't think we're gonna end gambling if we don't grant licenses. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions? Dennis?
Um, no, well, I don't know if we're, are we in, I guess we're not into...
If there's, if there are no questions, we can jump right in here.
Okay, all right.
Is there a motion? Well, let's see, is there a motion? Well, I guess we talk about it first and then a motion?
Perhaps.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so um, well, first of all, this is gonna be the one, we're talking first about ordinance two thousand sixteen oh five oh four three. I think we oughta separate them, of course, they are separated, and let's talk about them one at a time. Um, so I, I have received um, several comments from the neighbors in the East Urbana area who first said that they weren't even aware that this was being a proposed uh, gaming establishment, and then now that they're aware of it, they have a lot of concerns. Their concerns are based upon the effect of gambling um, on the community in general, which is um, one way of looking at it, but another way is that they question whether having a gambling site uh, in the neighborhood right at a important street crossing leading to Lille School, in which students or young children are being taken to school by their parents, uh, or walking by their own volition, um, is a, a wise location for Vegas Place as it's been proposed at five oh one South Vine Street. So um, I myself feel that um, I did ask that community development provide a map of the gaming license locations in our community, and you know, we have them all listed on this map, and um, it's not like we are not supporting gaming. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty locations where gaming is uh, is possible to do, to find a gaming machine. My question, I think, is for myself, I having received the information from my neighborhood, and my point of view is that I think we've kinda hit a saturation point. I think we, I think the city is pretty well-blanketed already, and we don't have to become uh, you know, I don't feel like we're in competition with um, Champagne. I don't worry that, that people will drive uh, two and a half miles to go gaming when they have a place down the block they can go. And um, right now, we have a place at Emma's, we have the, the VFW Point um, post that is also near Vine Street, and um, perhaps we have enough, we have Ruby's that was opened up at Schnucks Plaza. Um, certainly, in my neighborhood, there's plenty of opportunities to walk, uh, one, one and a half minutes to get to a gaming place, um, so I support my neighbors uh, with the request that the city council deny this particular license at five oh one South Vine.
I, I feel rather differently about the two uh, applications. The one at five oh one South Vine is on a busy thoroughfare. It's um, really a downtown uh, location. I think there are very, very few Lille School students who would go by there on their way to school. The Lille neighborhood is off on the other side of uh, of, of, uh, of, it's on the other side of Lille Elementary School, and it, it um, uh, so I'm inclined actually to uh, to favor this one. The, the other one is a tough one for me. I'm, I'm, I'm cognizant of the fact that, that the person who is requesting this has proven himself to be a good businessperson, but I think that the, the fact that neighbors in that neighborhood are... are opposed to this particular business at this particular site, uh, is, I think that carries a lot of weight with me. Uh, I think that to overrule neighbors, there ought to be either, either their, their concerns ought to be clearly not unreasonable, and, uh, or there ought to be some compelling public good. And, um, I think their concerns are, it's easy for me to say, I actually do believe their concerns are perhaps somewhat exaggerated. On the other hand, they're coming from people who are really very, very, working very, very hard to build that neighborhood. I think they need to be given some, some deference. So I'll listen to all the discussion, but I'm inclined right now to vote in favor of the one on Vine Street, but in opposition to the one on, um, on Washington.
Bill?
Yeah, I'll just talk to some of the dollars and cents of, um, the, how much revenue it generates for Urbana and how much it's costing our citizens. So what we look at is how much it's generating for Urbana. It was two hundred fifty-one thousand last year. I think it's projected to generate three hundred thousand this year. That's five percent of the total loss in the machines. So basically, you multiply that by twenty, and that's how much our residents and visitors are losing in the video gambling. So last year was five million dollars, this year is six million dollars, and, um, personally, I think that's enough. I think, um, I, I don't think we can afford to keep bleeding that amount of money and, and more. And I don't think it'll stop. I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a saturation point. But by putting it in people's backyards, it's just going to make it easier, and it's going to make it more tempting. And there's a difference between the, um, the recreational gambling, or the kind of, um, gambling for entertainment versus gambling out of a little bit of desperation. And I've, I've gambled in, in all, all phases of my life, and, uh, I'd say in some of my earlier phases, it was a little bit more toward the desperation point. Not so much, but, you know, I would spend more than I could afford on gambling. And now if I gamble, it's for fun, and I would have a drink with it, and, um, I, I would figure I'd lose fifty dollars at a time. But to, to go ahead and extrapolate those numbers, so five dollars ninety-eight cents for Urbana per capita is what the city makes. So multiply that by twenty, that's a hundred twenty dollars per capita is what the residents are losing. And when you consider a third of our residents aren't even twenty-one years old, it's really closer to a hundred eighty-one dollars a year per capita our residents are losing. Now, I don't know how many people you know that gamble. I don't know, I, I'd say, you know, it's hard to tell, but maybe one out of ten people I know would gamble. So really, the people that are losing money are probably losing closer to eighteen hundred dollars a year, and there's a lot of people that aren't losing money. So I think this is a significant loss for a relatively small number of people, um, most of whom probably can't afford to lose it. But excepted that, you know, there are people that can be entertained by it, and I would be entertained by it if I went out and gambled tonight. And there's plenty of opportunities to do that. Um, but by putting it in, in, in the neighborhood where, um, people are tempted just too much, it's too easy, I think we're just, um, we're not doing anything for our residents by doing that. And as far as our, our potential losses, um, if we give up this thirty thousand dollars for each of these, it'd be sixty thousand dollars in potential revenue probably per year. But some of that money would be spent on entertainment or other things in the city anyway, so we would get some tax money off of, some of that. We'd also have a savings and a few, a lot, less social services we'd have to provide, um, less potential poverty, less potential family problems. And, you know, I don't think anybody expected there to be big police problems, um, at any individual gambling operation. I think that the social problems are different than that. Um, they extend over longer periods of time. It takes longer for them to, to be, um, become a problem. It takes years sometimes for the consequences of gambling in a family to actually have an effect. And sometimes it won't have a, the effect that you can measure with Police Department. It would be an effect that you'd measure in quality of life and, um, and, uh, problems in a neighborhood and, or just declining maintenance of houses and, you know, uh, how, uh, cars being repossessed and things like that. It's not something that necessarily the police are going to notice. So I voted against the last one. I'm going to continue voting against these. Um, and in the ordinances, it does, I think I have it. It does say that, whereas the city council finds that the best interests of the city are served by amending said section to increase the number of Class G-two liquor licenses. So if that's what you believe, um, I'd say you should vote yes on that. But I don't think the best interests of the city are served by increasing numbers of these, especially in these locations so close, close to residents. So there's nothing, you know, nothing against the business owner. I think he's done a great job with the, with the facility he have there. And I've shopped there before, and, uh, I know when I've done cleanups in the neighborhood, some of the, um, restaurant pick, you know, restaurant indicators, I've seen some Popeyes. I don't think that location is probably big enough for a Popeyes, but I know you serve chicken at your place, so I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of good chicken around. Um, but, you know, I, I wish you the best for finding a good restaurant for that location. I like Jay Gumbos, and uh, I could think of some other suggestions for that. You know, it has to be kind of small, but, um, there's some potential there. So I hope you do that, and I, I hope you find something that the neighborhood will support. But I just can't support another video gambling outlet.
Eric?
So, um, I've learned a lot here this evening as well. I have not been to the business. I don't want to talk about you like you're not here. As a business owner, I think that it's wonderful to have responsible business owners who are going to do great things, right, who want to do positive things. And so I want to encourage you. I, I always want to see the potential business owners to go through the neighborhood, talk to the neighborhood groups, and maybe have a powwow about what do we want here in this area, and how can we come to some sort of terms on it? And it is a problem for me to think about, um, you said earlier about people will travel to get to these places, and they will. That's true. So I don't know why people aren't traveling from Champagne to Urbana now. Are they traveling from Rantoul to Urbana now? And so I do think location is extremely important, and to see the development that's coming with Aspen Court, and knowing the neighborhood of Lyman, the way that I know that neighborhood, I'd be very concerned, as I was when I voted no for, and the ones on, on North Lincoln as well. And, um, I hadn't thought as, uh, more mathematical, mathematically about some of the numbers that, Bill, you just shared here. And I am concerned about, um, poor people in our community, um, having this sort of desperate approach to try to make ends meet. And I, I do feel that it's somewhat exploitive at some point, um, for the people to say, hey, look, here's this. And I understand from a business standpoint, you're like, I, I need to, I want to make money, and I want to try to, to make it happen. But I'm really concerned about these, uh, these parlors and, and the way that they're popping up, and the way people are losing money, right? So I'm not supportive of this one either, but I'm very open to, you know, walking with you, going into the neighborhood, talking to people, like, what would we support here? What would we actually come and buy so that it can be successful? Because I do want to encourage all business owners who are doing, uh, good, good things with the businesses in our community to continue to do so. I would love to see jobs being created over there. So I'm very supportive of those things, but I'm not supportive of, of, of another gaming parlor.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah. Well, you know, I've never been comfortable using gambling as a source of revenue for the city, but at the same time, uh, I've spoken about consistency, and, you know, you look at, uh, the amount of money we make off of alcohol, off of cigarettes, off of gasoline, all of which can kill you, or killing the planet, uh, as the case may be. From a libertarian point of view, what people do, uh, to themselves is their business. We've made a lot of money off of gambling. We make even more as, off of alcohol, as has been pointed out, uh, and it's sold at the sixty-six gas station right next door. If we're consistent, uh, then we need to recognize the human choice in this, and that's to gamble, to drink, to do drugs, eat junk food, climb Mount Everest. Uh, we do lots of dangerous things as, as our choices be. You know, I have a, I have a bicycling habit that exposes me to, you know, uh, two thousand pound or four thousand pound vehicles on a regular basis, uh, but I'm not going to stop bicycling. None of the gambling halls have been a problem. Of course, it would be better if this were a food establishment asking for a G-one. You know, if, if the place across the street was a, was a food establishment, uh, asking for a G-one, would our reaction or would the community's reaction be different? I've heard that, uh, if Home Run were a G-one, were a full-blown restaurant with a G-one component, it would be more acceptable. I don't find it different. If two-thirds of the building is food and one-third is a G-two, uh, I don't see that as being really different from a G-one. So, um, I, uh, the, the, the consistency, uh, aspect of all this, uh, leads me to, uh, let businesses make their own decisions. Uh, I don't see a plateauing. Uh, I put, you know, I, I added to the graphing here. Yeah, we've had a steady rise. I don't see a plateauing. Uh, I think, uh, the point you stop is when, when businesses, when, when the revenues plateau and, and, uh, from an economic point of view, you don't stop until it plateaus, and then you've saturated the market, but that hasn't happened here. So uh, I don't have a data-driven, uh, reaction to, to, to this as Bill does, uh, though, um, uh, his is a very valid way of analyzing the data. People are losing money. Uh, would they lose it buying junk food? Would they lose it going to a movie theater? Yeah, they're going to do something for entertainment. Uh, but it isn't, uh, those are not necessarily addictive behaviors. So, so I understand, uh, where you all are coming from. But, uh, from, from my point of view, I think we're being inconsistent, uh, to deny both of these licenses. I'll take the chair. Dennis?
So I guess we're talking about both, and I guess that's fine. So, um, as you heard, there were, um, many more people from, who have concerns, have worked in the Lyman neighborhood in particular, who, um, realize the very sensitive, uh, balance that exists in most people's lives who live at Aspen Court at this time. Uh, we have people who, um, have multiple families living in their homes because of, uh, potential homelessness. They're fighting various addictions. Yes, police calls have been, uh, reduced in that area, of course, so is population with the reduction of the housing stock in the, in that community. We, I think all of those people, uh, appreciate Mr. Patel's efforts at, uh, fifteen oh nine, um, East Washington to make, uh, improvements in his business. He's been very helpful and supportive, uh, at different times with, uh, putting in, um, putting posters up in his business, uh, letting us water during the times that we're at the garden. He's been a very, very good neighbor. Because, uh, because of that, I, um, I want to, uh, again, say that, uh, we, we, I think the neighborhood is encouraging, um, progress and maybe conversation, more conversation about potential use for the, those businesses. And if Mr. Patel himself mentioned earlier in his, um, comments to the, to the community that he doesn't see why this can't, um, be located at this one spot, but that there might be other places that, that he could own a gaming establishment and just point them out to him, well, maybe that's a step that we should take seriously, that maybe there are other buildings in, in the area that might be a better location for his business venture than this particular, um, shop that he owns. And I would still like to point out that, that gaming is already available to this community in both Boomerangs and Silver Bullet, which is certainly within walking distance. To put another, um, establishment that's G-one may be less, uh, intrusive to the neighborhood, but for, but we're looking at a G-two license here. And that's a dedication just entirely, the, the business is to make gambling profit. And so I will support those people who've commented on the negative effects of gaming in that community by not voting for it. I want to remind you that Diane Marlin also wrote an extensive email to the, to the city council with, uh, with her concerns. She would vote no if she were here, and so would Tyler Fitch, who's on the planning commission. So yes, we like to make money in the city, and we do need to make money, but we should be making it on business that doesn't damage the community's pocketbook in the way that this particular business does.
Okay, well, I think if that, you know, I, I'm not seeing any motions here, but, uh, the horse is, you know, just establishing G-two establishments, uh, we, we, we let that horse out of the barn a long time ago. So is there a motion on either one of these? Eric?
I'll, I'll move, uh, five oh one South Vine.
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's been, any further discussion on five oh one South Vine? Uh, those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Uh, that motion, um, is defeated. Uh, the second item is, uh, ordinance twenty sixteen five forty-four. That's for fifteen oh nine East Washington. Is there a motion? Uh, seeing no motion, guys, for lack of, uh, emotion, um, is there any further business? Seeing none, we're adjourned.